Better? All right, good job. Thank you guys for coming tonight. I love seeing a full house. That's always a good thing to see. We have tonight a special guest, Mr. Jake Flood, who is a son of Travis and Abby Flood. I think you guys know each other, right? And Jake is going into the eighth grade. He's at Shawnee Middle School, and he's gonna call us to order. So, sir, it's all you. Talk nice and loud.
I called this meeting to order.
Good job. So, we will do our declaration of quorum. So, we'll call the roll.
Matthews.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Flood.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Seaborn.
Here.
Stalter.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, thank you very much. And to do our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Ben Hill from Frontline Church.
Yes, sir. It's all yours. All right. Let's pray. God, we thank you for our town and thank you for this county. Thank you for all the good people that live here. God, we do ask for your blessing on this county and this town. I pray that you would give humility and just a heart of service to these men and all these people that are here tonight, Lord. And we just ask for your providence. God, we thank you for all that you're doing, and we ask that you just continue to do it, continue to make us humble and bless people. Amen.
Thank you. All righty. Do you want to send flags to Luke? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the people of our country, for its change, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. So, item one, citizen participation. We've got a good, long list tonight. So, same rule as always, three-minute limit per person, 12 minutes per topic. And we probably not gonna respond to you, but if you stick around to the end, we do commissioner comments. You may hear some comments there to answer questions or make comments on what folks have said. So, with that, we will start. As folks have signed up, Lonnie Cox, you are first up. Now, I didn't know. I always called you Michael.
Oh. Hello, I'm Mike Cox. I live at 16808 Magnino Road, and I'm here tonight for, to talk to you a little bit about the new kayak dock we've got out at the lake. And first of all, I'd like to appreciate all the people that played a part in being able to obtain the funds so that citizens of Shawnee will be able to use this piece of equipment. I've been out and looked at it, and it's a really nice dock. And I'd also like to thank all the people that's up here because I know that you work fee-free, and it takes a lot of time to do this job, and a lot of people just come up here and, right, and they don't really appreciate y'all. So, I do appreciate y'all. I looked at the, hang on just a second. Jim, hold my sunglasses. We didn't have a beer in here, right? I did look at the situation, and I did have some concerns, so I wanted to express those concerns because I think what really happened here was maybe the, maybe you didn't get good information from your staff. And to pick the particular location that you have, there's several problems with that location. One is that you know that Lake Two, the primary purpose for Shawnee's lakes is the water supply. But you know, at Lake Two, that's also flood control. And where you place that dock is actually in that channel right there. The channel is originally designed to level the lakes. It's an equalization channel is what it is. And of course, people use it to run their boats through there all the time, but that's not what it was intended for. But what it was intended for was to control the flood in about 32 square miles around that lake. And so, it's a flood control lake. And by placing the ramp inside the channel, what you've done is you've actually placed that in what they call the floodway. And you just need to get with your, with your FEMA representative here in the community that handles your flood plane and take a look at your maps, and it should show you where the floodway is. The, that part of the spill, that channel is also the spillway for Lake Number Two. And you don't want to really compromise that spillway. I've watched water go through that lake for the last 20 years, and in times when we have a lot of flooding, there's a lot of water goes through there. In fact, I've been there at times when you couldn't even hear the person next to you talk because it was so loud, there was so much water going through there. And you probably don't realize how much force that water plays going through that channel. But during the times of floods and the lake's already full, that level goes up about a foot to 18 inches in that channel from the high watermark.
Mr. Cox, I hate to cut you off, but your time is up.
Wow, that was a fast three minutes, right?
It was. But we appreciate your comments.
Okay. Appreciate y'all hearing me.
Thank you. It was good seeing you. Next up is Mr. Rob Morris. Come on up, Rob. How are you tonight?
I just had a couple things tonight, and actually, he brought up one. I was curious if, if and or when we were gonna move the kayak dock to a safer location that had been addressed by a lot of people in the community so far. The other thing is, the planning commission the other day, we've got committee members that vote that aren't on the committee anymore. And if you look at tonight's agenda, they're gonna be back June 1 of 2024 is when they'd expire. So, it expired in June, yet they're voting in July. It's a little thing. It's small, but if we miss little things like that and allow people to vote that aren't supposed to, I mean, what else would we miss? So, next thing, y'all have an election tonight, or an appointment, actually, for vice mayor. I just want to remind everybody that Title 25, Section 314 states that willful violation of, in this case, Open Meeting Act, is a misdemeanor, punishable five by $500 or a year in county jail. I think I've said that before, but I'll say it again. So, when y'all appoint people tonight that don't live in city limits anymore, remember that. Title 25, Section 314, willful violation, and has penalties with it. Next thing is our committee. Are we ever gonna have a meeting? I mean, I know they picked the people. I heard that much, but I haven't heard anything else. Next is the Lake Committee. I hope y'all do pass that. I'm looking forward to putting in, putting my hat in for the Lake Advisory Committee. I think that'd be cool. And with that, I guess I'm actually going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wolf Gugler. Hope I said that right.
You did.
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Doing great.
Just short and sweet, too. I've been a lake leaseholder since 2005. I volunteered and participated in the Lake Advisory Committee in 2010. I think we had a number of citizens that worked with city staff and collaborated and came out with some really good ideas of revisions to the ordinances at that time. So, again, in full support of the advisory committee, and I hope that you vote to establish one this evening as well. And lastly, just wanted to voice my support for Commissioner Bob Weaver. I think he challenges the status quo. He asks questions that need to be asked, and just make sure he makes an informed decision. I think it's a great approach to take. Thank you, Bob.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up is Teresa Rowe. There she is. I didn't see her. She snuck in. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. This is my first time to address the commissioners, honorable members, and mayor. I come in reference to Item 11, Discussion and Possible Action to Appoint a Shawnee Lake Advisory Committee, to assist in the revisions of the lake ordinances. Not knowing who you plan to appoint to this committee, it's my hope that you would include a leaseholder. And I would also ask your consideration to include, maybe make it a public forum if you're going to pass ordinances that have a significant effect on leaseholders, so that we could be a little more participative or participator, you know what I'm trying to say? Participating and to be aware of what your plans are because I don't really know what they are, and I would like to be in the loop as a leaseholder.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
It's good to see you. All righty. Next up is Jackson Nguyen. Hopefully, I got that right. There we go. How are you, sir?
Hey, I'm doing well. How are you?
Doing great.
So, I just wanted to talk a little bit on behalf of the White Fox scooters that we have at Oklahoma Baptist University, and I pretty much just want to say that it has been a big success at OBU. We have seen, just in my personal experience, just the convenience of being able to ride the scooters to classes to get there on time and be able to park them and dock them. We have several different stations on campus, and so that's been very convenient, and we've been able to just see how much that's helped the students and myself. And so, that's been a huge thing at OBU, and excited to see, you know, the plans that White Fox has to expand potentially in the Shawnee community and area so that it can help people that don't necessarily have transportation get from one place to another at a very cheap cost. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see. Next up, is it Noah Demoss? There we go. I must have said it right.
Yeah, that was great. My name's Noah. I'm also a student at Oklahoma Baptist University, here to talk more about the scooters that we have. To be honest, when they came to OBU, I was a little wary, and if you've been to other cities, you've seen scooters, and they can get a little cluttered, and the streets can get a little crowded. But White Fox has a great system with the docking station, and never once have there been scooters left out or cluttered. They're always put away right in the spots, accessible to people, but also not getting in the way of foot traffic or driving traffic. So, that was, been really awesome to see. Also, I wondered how much were they gonna get used by the students that we have and even the faculty members? And I'm happy to say that I've seen students use them both for fun, riding around at night, just hanging out, also getting back and forth to class, and even I've seen faculty members use it to get across our campus as well. And so, while we have a small campus, it's still nice, especially in the heat of the summer, to just hop on a scooter and ride over. And as I think about in the future, moving forward, if our area was able to expand, I know we have students on campus who are unable to go places because they don't have a vehicle. We have students that are from far away or even out of the country, and they can't go places. In the past, we had tried to bring in bikes so that way they could get to other parts of the city, and these scooters could be another great opportunity for them to reach places such as a grocery store or just even going to run and get a quick meal off campus. And so, excited if that's an opportunity you guys want to proceed, but I definitely know they've been helpful for our students, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up is John Bob Simple. Come on up, John. How are you doing this evening?
Doing very well. Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
Commissioners, thank you for letting me come to share with you today. I'm here to talk to you about park adoptions. We've been working with faithful city staff, each of our stakeholder groups, like the beautification community, like Parks and Recreation, to help improve our parks further and as citizens, be able to rally folks to be able to have a way to support those parks in meaningful way. At Blue Zones Project, we, I think it's critically important that if we're gonna have a healthy community, our built environment's gotta reflect that. When it comes down to the quality of life that we've got, there's some unique ways that I, we believe that we can add to the environment, enhance it that much more. We are so thankful that we've been able to do that, not just by ourselves, but along with Public Works and OSU Extension, to be able to do that in a smart way, in a sustainable way. Because of the great work at SEI, we have, our parks are not just cluttered with litter everywhere. They're stepping into that gap. But what we know is that there's additional work that needs to be done. It's critically important for us to be able to take up ways for people to be able to adopt, especially our neighborhood parks, and our parks that may not be getting the front end of the attention that the city is going to be investing in our parks. We've created a program to be able to create some opportunities for individuals, families, for churches, for businesses, to be able to invest in some of those neighborhood parks that need some additional time. Fun fact, we have 181 beds that our city Public Works folks are investing in. It's an unbelievable task, but if we can try to put some energy into this, our 36 parks can be that much more beautiful. Over the next 18 months, Blue Zones Project has agreed to help oversee the administration of this program, to create, adopt the parks that won't create additional work for city staff. One of the great things is this is a moving target, and we've had some folks step up pretty early. Folks like Heritage Church, one of their life groups, also Oklahoma Baptist University, and most recently, a local business stepped in and said, hey, put me in, coach. So, what we really want to do is to be able to help rally our community, to step in, to support our city staff, to support the work of SEI, to support the work of the families that want to call these parks a part of their home. If you're interested, you can email padawadmecounty@sharecare.com, and we're gonna provide the details of this information to our media partners so folks can reach out. This is a pilot. We know there's plenty to learn, and we'd invite other folks to not only participate, but to help us make sure this is effective. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All righty. Next up is Darren Lofton. How are you, sir?
I'm good. How'd you get?
Doing great.
Hey, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Darren Lofton. I live at 10 Northwood Drive, north of Shawnee a little bit here, and I'm the owner of KSNL Arrow. We have an aircraft repair station over at the airport. I've got three businesses that I operate out of the airport. One is an airline in Indonesia, which I have 45 employees. One is KSNL Arrow, and we've increased our employee base to 17 now. I want to tell you a little bit about the company real quick. Our lowest-paid employee makes $23 an hour. Our highest paid, other than management, makes $35 an hour. We give Blue Cross, Blue Shield insurance free to the employees, and three weeks vacation, sick leave, 401K. It's a good quality job we're bringing here to Shawnee. We have a proposal that we've passed by the airport committee, and we were told that the very following agenda here, city, we would be on the next agenda. I think that one was canceled for weather back in March, and so, we've been waiting ever since to get on the agenda to discuss a proposal that we have to build two restaurants, a rental car center, a 62-spot parking lot, eight additional hangars for people that want to use the airport and want to park their aircraft there, you know, and a 40,000-square-foot hangar, which would be twice of the size that we have one right now, that we have right now. That hangar would bring, that business alone would bring, we estimate, 100 additional jobs to Shawnee in the same pay scale, $23 to $35 an hour. So, I'd just like the opportunity to make, to get on the agenda. I'm not sure what that would take. We've passed the Airport Board Committee contingent upon the City Council approving our proposals. Maybe you might want to hear what I have to say, you know, further at another time. If you can put me on the agenda, maybe you might want to consider passing some of it, if not all of it, but we would just like to have the opportunity to at least get on the agenda and speak to you about it and to hopefully bring some more quality jobs to Shawnee. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All righty. Next up is Teresa Burnett. How are you, Teresa? Doing well?
Hello. I'm just short and sweet. I just wanted to speak to you, Mr. Weaver. I haven't been able to come to the last several meetings that we've had here, but I've been watching everything online, and I want to thank you for standing up, for speaking, for when you were being verbally attacked on multiple fronts, that you held strong. We are in a time right now that I think someone who's willing to, you know, sometimes be alone in a situation, but you're standing for the people and you're standing for what you know is right, that's a great sign of integrity. And I know a lot of people that are watching all of this online. The ground swell is rolling. People are paying attention where maybe a long time ago they weren't so much, and people are noticing, and I just want to speak on behalf of a lot of people that I am actually representing here that couldn't be here. But thank you very much, and we really appreciate it, and we, I do appreciate everything, but I, this was just something that I had noticed watching the previous meetings on how you were attacked, and I just wanted you to know that people are noticing, and we very much appreciate your stand. Thank you.
This one was asked to go last, even though I didn't perceive it last, so I'll move that. So, I hope I say this right. Is it Antoinette Smith? Okay. And then I have one more, but she asked to go last, so I'll.
Hello. Today's my first time actually presenting myself in front of you guys, so I truly do thank you guys for all your support that you guys do with the community. I am somewhat a business owner here in Shawnee. I do not live at this actual residence, but my business is here. I have both car washes that's right off of Bernard Road, and I have struggled with this business with the vandalism, the homeless. I can go back and forth. Right now, I'm asking that you guys please take a look at my appeal for demolition of the building. The structure of the building itself is freestanding, and it is up to code. Unfortunately, with the vandalism and the homeless situation that we have in that particular areas, it's caused me to kind of undergo. When I say undergo, I'm meaning as far as me repairing my car wash grids at the bottom. I've replaced them three times. Each time, it's $300 apiece to replace them, and I think that they're selling them at the recycle center. I've put clothes signs since that they have vandalized and robbed me so many times. I put clothes signs up. I've been there recently cleaning up in the middle of the night, and the drug trafficking and the homeless is just outrageous. I'm asking if you guys could give me an opportunity. I'm looking to either remodel the place or sell the place, but I do, the building itself and the structure itself is most definitely a great standing building. It's a great opportunity for a small business leader to go, get off in there and get it up and going. Unfortunately, with COVID, I've lost both of my parents with that, and it's been kind of crazy as far as my timeframe and getting things cleaned up. I've been working with the city on that piece of cleaning it up. I'm actually trying to see if we can actually look at a few things as far as some outreaches for the homeless as well. I tried to make notes because I know I got three minutes.
All right.
So, the robbery, the destroying of my property, my business expenses, the homeless, the drug trafficking, dumping grounds as well. Like, I take truckloads out of both car washes of furniture, couches, it's whatever, they're just, they just drop it in those locations. The surrounding areas, the school that's right across the, that's right down the street from my business, there's a church that's right next door, there's an auto mechanic store that's right directly across the street. Those buildings, and I'm not the one to put them out there, but those buildings look like they need to be destroyed. I just would not want you to waste your time in, in destroying a building when there is some that might be more prestige or, or more unfit for the public to go ahead and destroy those buildings. I also would like to say that Cinderella Hotel, just, just me speaking out loud, I mean, I think that if, I'm not a, what is the word I'm looking for? That's not my profession as far as the standards of that particular hotel, but with the drug trafficking and the homeless situation that we have here in Shawnee, I just think that, you know, maybe giving them an outreach, you know, even like actually talking to some of the people that's there that, that come pop, that comes by my business while I'm there cleaning, they basically tell me they have nowhere to go. I've filled out several police reports. I actually turned that into you guys recently.
Ms. Smith, I hate to cut you off.
Is my time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming to talk to us tonight.
I think I covered everything. Again, I really do appreciate you guys giving me time.
You bet. Ma'am, could you tell me your name again, please?
My name is Antoinette Smith. I'm with AW Real Estate. Antoinette and Antonio Smith with AW Real Estate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
All righty. So, now we're to the lady that asked to go last. I hope I don't say the name wrong, but Amy Camerata, is that right? Come on up, Amy. How are you?
I am good. The reason why I asked to go last is because I want to make sure anybody that wanted to speak on the Lake Advisory Board had a opportunity to do that before we hit the 12 minutes. Am I okay to continue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For those of you that I haven't had an opportunity to meet, my name is Amy Camerata. I am a residential landowner of the Shawnee Twin Lakes. First off, I would like to take a moment to thank you for your consideration of a Lake Advisory Board. Over the last couple of months, I've had an opportunity to visit with residents of the lakes, visitors to the lake, the Lake Patrol, city staff, and of course, some of you commissioners about your thoughts on the lake. What I've heard during those visits are a lot of great ideas as well as a few concerns. A well-formed advisory board could be comprised of residents of the lakes, annual permit holders, Shawnee citizens, and a representative from the Lake Patrol could indeed meet the standards stated within the comprehensive plan for the city of Shawnee. That states that the city of Shawnee will seek meaningful input from the public on development plans and programs, that those decisions will be made in a transparent and collaborative manner with an opportunity for input for all affected entities. This weekend, I did see the Lake Patrol on the lake, and I know you guys have heard from me on that matter. I took the opportunity to kind of follow him and, and visit and stop and visit with Officer Nichols about his thoughts and ideas on a Lake Advisory Board, and he very much liked the idea. He also had several great ideas for the lake, thoughts on the ordinances, and stated that he would be willing to participate in a Lake Advisory Board. Mr. Nichols shared several hurdles that they have to being on the lake regularly. You guys have heard me say that I've been out there for seven years, and this weekend makes the fourth time I've seen a Lake Patrol on the lake. So, he said they had several hurdles, and the biggest hurdle was getting the boat on the lake. He would really like to see that there's a boat slip put on the lake. That way, it doesn't take two people to get a boat on the water, they don't have to go gas it up, they don't have to get the truck running to get it in, all the hurdles that take to get a lake, a boat on the lake. So, I hope that the city will consider getting him a boat slip in the interim if the city would permit it. They are more than welcome to po, to park both their boat and their jet ski on my dock. I'll put additional tie-downs. They can park in my driveway, or I have a vacant lot that I own next to my property that they can park on as well. And I'm more than willing to do that if the city will allow it. So, I hope you will look into that further. I think when everything started with the commercial development, placement of the kayak ramp, and ordinance changes, that we may have been putting the cart before the horse. As Mr. Flood frequently states in commission meetings, let's move forward intentionally. Please establish a Lake Advisory Board that can move the Shawnee Twin Lakes in a positive direction for both the city and the residents, and continue to protect the water source for the city of Shawnee while providing a safe, attractive destination for visitors to the city of Shawnee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, I think we have everybody. So, we will move on. Item two is Consider Approval of Consent Agenda. Gentlemen, is there anything that you want to pull off of the consent agenda? If not, has anybody got a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
And Mr. Rutherford. All righty. We have a motion and a second. We'll call the question. Item two passes 7-0. Item three should be our pick of the week. Do we have a, Chief says they're coming. Is it the pig this week? No, not the pig.
I'm gonna take the other one back. She got a little bit sniffy and protective. This one's super friendly. Her name is Sissy. She's about a year old, and she is spayed already. Her adoption fee is $5. If you live in town... If you live in town, it'll also be a $5 city tag. Um, currently at the shelter, we have, um, 22 dogs, five cats, and a pig.
And a pig.
Um, we had five dogs adopted, one cat, and three reclaims.
Really? Very good.
Thank you, guys.
That one certainly looks friendly.
Hang on, don't, don't run off. Don't run off. I had the fortunate and unfortunate ability to, to see our, our welfare, our animal welfare officers in, uh, action, um, with a, a young lady that unfortunately was in a, uh, had a bad incident with a dog. And, um, you don't understand until you see people do their job and do their job well. And I just wanted to say thank you for the way that, one, that you responded. Thank you for the way that you calmed the fears of the, the young lady and her mom. And then just thank you for being a, an employee that I, even though I was not acting as Commissioner Flood, I was acting as Mr. Travis for this little girl. I really appreciated how, how hard you do, your, how hard you worked to do your job and to be intentional about those things. Now there's that word again, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for, for, for being somebody that I'm proud to say works for the city of Shawnee.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Item four, introduction of Shawnee 2020 Student Teacher Delegation for Exchange Trip to Nikahoe, Japan. And, uh, Alicia Whitman is here somewhere, I think, with a big group and I'm gonna let her introduce everybody. And, you know, these guys, I mean, I really feel for it because they were supposed to go on a really, really neat trip and they didn't get to go because of, uh, COVID and, um, you know, I, I feel bad that they missed out on that opportunity. So, I only see four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm Alicia Whitman. I was just gonna say, uh, these are 2020 delegates. We chose 12 delegates in, um, February 2020 and they did not get to travel to Nikahoe. So, uh, most of them had prior commitments tonight, but I can let these four introduce themselves and then tell you the names of the others.
There we go. Thank you.
Um, hi, my name is Amelia Bronson and I'm, I used to go to Grove and now I'm going into Shawnee.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Logan Matlock. I go to North Rock Creek and Sanford High School.
Hi, I'm Addison Brown and I went to Grove School and now I'm going to North Rock Creek.
Hi, my name's Eva Grass and I used to go to Shawnee Middle School. Now I go to Shawnee High School.
All right, good.
So we have eight others. They are Avery Ford from Grove School, Boston Busler from Grove School, Carson Atwood from Grove School, Emerson Thomas from Shawnee Middle School, Evan Babbie from Shawnee Middle School, Isabella Johnson Shawnee Middle School, Micah Tate Shawnee Middle School, and Rachel Yu from Grove School.
Well, thank you. Congratulations on being chosen. I know that's a really big honor, very competitive and, um, and I, you know, man, I am so sorry that you didn't get to go. It's good to see you guys. Some of you I've known since you were about knee-high there, so, um, it's good to, good to see you guys and thank you for coming to visit with us. I wish it could have been under happier circumstances that you were actually getting to go over there. But, thank you for coming out.
Do you want a picture?
Yeah.
You guys want to come down and take a picture?
Yeah, let's do that. You guys want to go do a picture with them?
Okay, could we bring them up here so Commissioner Weaver?
Sure, sure.
We don't, we don't see them.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Paul, sorry about that.
I would have been probably good down there. Yeah. All right. Another cool one here. Item five, presentation of Purple Heart City Plaque by Master Chief Larry Van Skyver. Uh, Purple Heart Legislative, I don't think that's your title though, Legislative, but Ambassador.
You've already got your name changed. I was gonna introduce.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank the Commissioners, the Vice Mayor, and the Mayor for recognizing combat wounded veterans, but really recognizing all veterans like our VFW partners, the Ladies' Auxiliary that are here and I'm having the honor to meet today. But the state of Oklahoma as the commander, I want to say you're joining our Purple Heart family of taking care of all veterans across our state. And Shawnee has had a long reputation of hiring veterans at your please, fire, and stuff, and so we are so proud today from a combat wounded veteran to say I am blessed and honored to meet all of you and thank you for this honor. Uh, I wish somebody that could speak better was here, but I could tell you from my heart, I'm blessed and I thank you for this honor, each and every one of you. And thank you to the city of Shawnee.
I have to tell everybody what that is.
I have a plaque here, uh, that says, "The Military of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veteran, becoming a Purple Heart City presented by me, the Oklahoma State Commander, and all the patriotic members of the state of Oklahoma. All 3,422 of us thank you from the bottom of our heart. God bless you all."
But, you know, we, we cannot thank these men and women enough for, for the sacrifice that they, they make for our nation and, and, um, you know, just without them, we probably can't get together and assemble like we do here tonight and do the things that we do. And, you know, you, you, that's, that's not anything any of us want to wear. I mean, you, you earned that the hard way and, and we really appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you so, so much.
Thank you, sir.
And let me tell you, I, this, this is an amazing thing for our city. I love the new signs that we have up.
I look forward to coming down and breaking bread with you.
This is Barbara's wife and she's the lady that instigated this entire thing for the city of Shawnee. And I just want to get a picture.
Come over here and get, turn, you gotta turn this way now. You're so proud of you. You get in here too, you were with this group. There you go.
Thank you guys so much. No, no, you go right ahead. Just be careful and don't trip over any of the wiring there.
Okay, we move on to item six, commission appointment of Vice Mayor per Article Three, Section Six of the city charter. So, Mr. Allison, you are up.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm gonna relegate that task back to you all.
Okay, very good. So, so I guess we do this annually, is my understanding. And so, um, Aaron's been serving as our, our Vice Mayor and, and you would like to continue in that capacity?
If that's the, if that's the will of the commission.
So, he's, he's willing, so I imagine we need, want to need to have a, a motion and a, a second.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
It's been implied that we have a legal issue and I'd like the city attorney to weigh in, please.
Yep.
Certainly, Commissioner, the, the implication has been that, uh, I believe Commissioner Rutherford may not live in district. And while that would speak more generally to his commission seat and less towards Vice Mayor, um, upon investigation by the city and legal opinion in my office, we do not believe that that is in fact an issue. That, that information's been provided to the commission. Um, I'm not gonna get any deeper into it than that, uh, for fear of breach of attorney-client privilege, but at this point in time, there's a level of comfort that it is appropriate for Commissioner Rutherford to continue to serve both as Ward Four Commissioner and potentially as Vice Mayor if this board sees fit.
Very good.
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Rutherford is appointed Vice Mayor.
I'll second. All righty, Daniel and Travis. So we have a motion and a second. We will call the question.
I'm guessing I should abstain.
That would be my suggestion, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, motion, this is six, I, and one abstention. So we'll move on to item seven. Discussion and consideration to allow staff to submit an application for emergency solution grant from Oklahoma Department of Commerce. So, Lauren Craig, you are up. How are you, Lauren?
I made it back. Very excited.
There you go. Looks like you had fun, though.
Yeah, lots of hiking. Uh, thank you guys for letting me speak today. I just want to go through this really quickly. Looks like you guys have a big agenda. So, uh, the emergency solutions grant is a grant, um, provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This grant is overseen state by state, um, for the state of Oklahoma. That is the Department of Commerce who we will apply directly to. Um, nothing out of the ordinary there. So the requirements of the city, if we do apply for this grant, is fiscal oversight and monitoring, um, the provision of 24/7 365 shelter, which in our grant, we are going to apply for a hotel motel credit. So that way we can provide hotel motel vouchers until more secure housing is secured. Um, in addition to that, to provide that shelter and the rapid rehousing program, we are going to work with local landlords to provide landlord incentives through the application of this grant. In addition to that, any, um, any assessments of shelter that are currently in operation of the city of Shawnee, most of our shelters, for instance, say Salvation Army or the, um, Youth and Family Services already do that annual assessment. This is not a big thing. It just has to be included in our documentation. This also provides, uh, the requirement that we would continue participating in that homeless management information system, which we are doing and doing very well. Um, additionally, this would, um, require us to provide our annual audit and the grant, oversee any policies and procedures on implementation of the grant, um, and do quarterly reporting through Sage. Um, for this overview, we're applying for $55,000 for emergency shelter. Um, that's the largest component or the second largest component of this grant. $15,000 of that will go for hotel motel incentive, uh, vouchers like we talked about and $30,000 of that would go for landlord incentives for rapid rehousing program. Additionally, we're applying for $85,000 in the hiring of additional program staff that would be specifically dedicated to the outreach component of this program. The staff will focus on connecting street outreach clients to services and shelter while working with me to make sure that we're doing all of that we need to do for the, um, coordinated entry. Um, the purchase of additional HMIS licenses, the purchase of incentives for outreach program is $5,800 of this grant. This would allow our incentives to be funded by this grant rather than donations. Uh, it's been kind of a struggle to keep the incentives that we pass out to our homeless friends and neighbors steadily funded. Uh, this would kind of provide relief. Additionally, um, HMIS license, we are wanting to provide a license to any persons providing shelter in our community. That way we have a more coordinated outreach program through homeless management information system, which is what Housing and Urban Development really asks us to do. Um, at the end of that, we get to apply for 5% of our, an additional 5% of all that we're applying for. That's that 14,500 that you're seeing there for administrative costs. So this would allow us to have a little bit more oversight in our budget. Um, this grant is due July 30th this year. Um, award notification takes place approximately on August 23rd. They specified that it would be approximately. This contract date would start by September 1st and it would end, uh, August 31st of next year. Um, by the end of February of 2022, it would be at least 50% of funds needing to be expended. I foresee no problems in doing so. Um, to, to, to. To implement this program, we have, uh, the city of Shawnee is our fiscal lead and the community market is our collaborative applicant. So I would like to schedule a meeting with us sometime soon to discuss how this will operate as far as the additional staff, um, and which, which organization that staff would be funded through and who they would, uh, uh, report to other than myself. Um, additionally, Gateway to Prevention has provided tremendous support for outreach training and support services. So that way the staff that we do bring on to do continuous outreach on streets and encampments have that additional support. Is there any questions regarding this grant?
Could you maybe explain to folks just so they understand the, the hotel motel vouchers and, and what is done with those and, and, you know, and kind of how that helps?
Yeah, yeah, happily. So, um, when you apply for emergency solutions grant, you have to have an emergency shelter component. Your emergency shelter component has to have 24/7 access to a bed. So say we wanted to partner with an organization like Salvation Army that would not be applicable to this grant due to the fact that they are not open during the day. Um, access to beds is a requirement just for health and sanitation purposes, especially when we're talking about COVID times. Hotel motel vouchers are not just a, here you go, stay in a hotel, have a great time. This is so that way you are housed while we are working directly with you to connect you to housing. This is not just a free stay for seven days. This is you're working with our program, you're working with our service providers. You have a case manager, myself, who is helping you navigate the barriers of housing.
Right. So it's just a, it's a stopgap, short-term solution.
Correct.
But it's better than having somebody out on the street.
Yeah, the key word there is emergency. This is an emergency placement until we can find a better solution.
Right.
Yeah.
Questions if you guys could.
Facility must be used as a shelter basically until 2031 for 10 years, I guess we're using a facility?
That's if we had used a portion of this grant towards the rehabilitation or allocation or acquiring of its shelter.
Basically, if we don't use the funds to redo a facility, then we're not locked into that.
We're not on the hook. We are on the hook for reporting as far as how the funding is being spent, where and who, but we're already doing that pretty well.
Right. We're, we're doing real well with the HMIS system. In fact, I know you've gotten high praise from, from HUD and how quickly you've learned that and how you've been implementing that, but it's just as, as the need grows here, I mean, we've got to have more people using that system.
Mm-hmm. It's about $500 for a license for homeless management information service, uh, system. That service is used nationwide, so if you have entered into a homeless program in another state, your number, your HMIS number will ping so we can see where you've been and what services you've been connected with before. Also, if somebody has family members that are trying to contact them and they've reached out to a nonprofit, if that person has an HMIS number, we get to find out. Um, it's a great system. It's an expensive system. It requires a lot of trainings, but it is a great system.
I just want to say I'm really thankful for, uh, the work you're doing, Lauren. I think a couple of other Commissioners were at the, uh, continuum of care meeting that we had and, um, I was blown away by that and all that you're doing to bring the community together. Um, for a long time, we've heard something needs to be done and there haven't been, there hasn't been a lot of action on it, but, uh, your ability to rally the community towards some, towards something we all want to see, uh, resolved, um, not, and I think we want to see it resolved not because we don't want to deal with it, because, but because that means a better future for so many of our friends and neighbors that are struggling currently. And I think probably the most painful, you know, for those that don't know, we had to pivot on this grant a little bit and, uh, probably the most painful, uh, phone call I've made was when you were calling and we were talking about it and, because I knew you were on vacation and, uh, your dedication to do that, um, was, uh, very remarkable. Um, I will be abstaining from the vote. Um, as you mentioned, um, you are talking with my Board of Directors about how this will be implemented and since I'm in And since I'm employed by Community Market and we don't really know where this is going to go, um, I'm going to stay out of the vote tonight, but, uh, I want to say I appreciate all your work and dedication to the cause. And, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, supporting your work further.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, that, that meeting that we had the other day, I mean, was amazing. You had thirty-plus organizations there and, you know, getting that many to work together and, and come together that quickly. I mean, it's just, just amazing. I mean, I don't know whether.
We got through our agenda in less than thirty minutes, that's.
Yeah.
Go team.
Yeah, no, you did a great job with that and I appreciate everybody who helped the hospital, giving us room to meet in. And, I mean, just, uh, just the way the community has embraced this, um, program and, you know, sees the potential in it is, is, has really been good to see. So, um, I appreciate you coming and, and all the hard work that you, you've put into this. Cause I, I know what Daniel said, you're doing this while you're on vacation in the middle of nowhere with very, very limited internet access. So it's not an easy thing to do. Are there questions, comments?
This is, this is one of several swings you're taking at this too. This isn't the only grant that we've got going and this isn't the only, you know, intentional program that we're working on to try and to work through all this. So that's, that gives me lots of hope that we just are not putting all of our, you know, eggs in one basket for the hopes that this works or this works, you know? And the fact that, that we're going at it this direction, looking at, you know, multiple options and every individual that has been to either the, the open meeting that we had in here or the meeting at the hospital, they, they were all solution-minded, they were all very, uh, caring and heartfelt in their desire to bring all the resources that we've got together to make a better world for everybody. And that's, that's something that we should, should be proud of as a city and that you should be proud of as, as the leader of, of this group of people, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? I'd like to make a motion that we move. Your motion.
For approval.
Second, all right, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, so we will call the question. And motion passes six, I and one abstention. Thank you very much. So item eight is a discussion and consideration of a contract with Eric Benson to serve as interim city manager. And Chance, I think you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, after, uh, the special call we had on June twenty-ninth, uh, there was a motion made to appoint Mr. Benson as our interim city manager and direct the city attorney's office to negotiate a contract with, uh, Mr. Eric Benson. Uh, we have successfully negotiated a contract that he's agreeable to. Uh, it's, it's at the rate that he was previously compensated, seventy-five dollars an hour plus reimbursable cost for a term beginning today, ending October thirtieth, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
I don't have, I'm happy entertaining any questions.
Any questions? No questions? Make a motion.
Second.
And Daniel, okay, I know it came from down that way. All right, we have motion and a second, so we will call the question then. And motion passes seven-zero. Congratulations. Good to see you. All righty. Item nine, discussion and consideration of contract with Holloway Updike and Bellin, Inc., HUB, for engineering services for Kamic and Georgia Gravity Relief Lines. And I think Seth is up, how are you sir?
Pretty good, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. So as the mayor just read, this is a professional services contract with Hub or Holloway, Holloway Updike and Bellin. It's for two new sewer line projects. Both projects eliminate existing lift stations, one's public, one's private. Um, the first project is over at Kamic and Harrison Street. I believe you guys probably have the exhibits in front of you to kind of show the extents because there's a little bit of spider web going on there. But, um, if you'll take a peek at that and if you have any questions, let me know. Uh, it, it basically turns that existing private lift station there into a gravity main. Um, the second project is at Georgia Street, which is, um, just east of the train tracks within the Brookhaven addition. Um, and it eliminates one of our more needy public lift stations. The overall design contract with Hub is for eighty-five thousand dollars and that covers everything from the initial survey through construction admin, bidding, et cetera. Staff has reviewed Hub's contract and recommends approval. The project is planned to be funded from the American Rescue Plan funding. Um, and with that, I would be open to any questions that you guys might have.
Can you expound on the private? Some people might have concerns about we're replacing a private. Just expound on that a little bit.
Yeah, so, um, there's a couple of business entities there right on Kamic Street that are serviced, they basically connect to a private lift station. So the lift station is owned and maintained by a private entity. That entity is Taco Tico, if you're familiar with the area. And, um, that, that lift station is currently out of operation. So our staff is pumping it out to keep it from back flowing out of service lines. So this gravity is just, uh, an option to, to relieve that effort, so.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised to learn that was even there. I had no idea, especially on a major street like that. I was, I was very surprised.
So as far as public sewer, this area is a little bit of a sewage desert.
Yeah. Interesting term, I've never heard that before. Yeah. Any other questions?
So can I go onto the railroad tracks, the Georgia?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it'll go north from the existing lift station, parallel the tracks and then turn west and connect in with the manhood.
I guess we're going to expect cooperation from the.
Yeah, well, it'll include some railroad permitting, um, but I don't, I don't foresee any problems there. It'll essentially just be a bore.
Is, was there a chance that, uh, something, uh, their, other business could come into place of where Taco Tico is currently that would need a different type of, um, station there?
I don't think that that was our motivation. I mean, truthfully, our motivation was just to get service to that area and prevent staff from continuing to pump that out, you know? Um, now if a business goes in there, they'll certainly be able to, to benefit from this addition, but it, I don't know that that was our motivation. You know what I mean?
Right, no, I don't, yeah, I was just wondering if that, if it would be adequate for what.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
In his place, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I immediately accept the recognition from staff.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And Mr. Rutherford with a second. All righty, so we will call the question. And that passes seven-zero, so moving on to item ten. Discussion and consideration of a services agreement with White Fox Scooters, Inc. And I think Sid here, there he is. How are you Sid?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you too. Thank you Mayor Bolts and, uh, Commissioners, uh, for the opportunity to share more information with you today about White Fox Scooters. Uh, as you know, um, we're the first dock-to-dock e-scooter company in the U.S. Um, and really specialize in this type of approach, uh, for a variety of different benefits, including safety, sustainability and many more. Um, we launched at OBU last March and as you've heard, have had great feedback so far. Um, and as a natural expansion of this, we, uh, uh, wanted to expand coverage into the downtown area and the surrounding community as well. Um, and so, uh, not only would this really, uh, improve the use cases for the OBU community, but also start service, uh, for the community at large as well. And having been operating in this area since last March, we've been able to gather a lot of data and routes and use cases that, uh, folks wanted to travel. Uh, so we've put together a preliminary list of, of potential locations and look forward to working with, uh, the city to, uh, finalize and improve them as well. Um, and, uh, finally, due to our existing service area at OBU, we have additional scooters and docking stations already in inventory, ready to deploy, um, as soon as the agreement is, uh, is approved. Um, probably within about two weeks of lead time, we can be, uh, live and up and running with another five docking stations, um, in the, uh, in the public and surrounding areas. Um, and, uh, and we're really excited to, to continue this conversation with you guys. Um, thank you again and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So one of the things I, I thought was kind of different, and you mentioned it, the docking station. So if I, if I rent a scooter, I go pick it up at a docking station and then I have to take it to another docking station. I can't just pitch it anywhere I want.
Exactly.
And I guess if I don't get it to a docking station or get it very close, because that could be full, then basically the meter's still running and I'm still paying for it. So that's a pretty good incentive to get people to actually bring those where they're supposed to be.
Right.
And so, as I understand it, you guys do all of the maintenance.
Exactly.
You rebalance it if, like, if they all get congregated at one docking station, you have someone that would move them back where they're supposed to be. You charge all the scooters, um, and, and Joe, you, you chime in. I mean, the, the contract protects us from any liability and that's what any, we're not having to worry about maintenance or, and it's totally revenue neutral for, for us.
Right, exactly. So, so we've had really good compliance with, obviously, as you mentioned, you know, keeping it nice and organized with, you know, folks returning it back to a docking station because they don't want to get charged those, you know, extra fees.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, and obviously that comes with a lot of the, those benefits that I mentioned. Um, in terms of the contract, as, as, uh, you know, we, we've discussed, it's actually at no cost to the city whatsoever. We'll be covering all the costs to install the docking stations, maintain the scooters, rebalancing, um, and, and with a completely, uh, local, local to Shawnee staff as well. Uh, so definitely some job creation there as well.
So were the guys from the docking stations, uh, they?
So we've, we've taken a, a preliminary first stab of a list and actually I'll be going to do a tour tomorrow just to finalize. And then we can work with the administration and you guys to just see what, which, uh, you know, are mutually agreed upon and we can, uh, we can kind of install from there.
Right. And then you can actually, I mean, it's kind of neat what you do. You can actually control where they can go and where they can't because you can geofence them, which I'm very familiar, being a drone pilot. So you can control what parts of, you know, where people can go, what routes and.
Exactly, so we have full geofencing capabilities, including no-go zones, slowdown zones and pretty much real time. If, if the, you know, uh, administration were to reach out and say, hey, we're realizing that this area, we'd like to keep folks away from this area, we could geofence it almost real time. And, and, you know, if a scooter does enter that area, it would slow down and stop and let the rider know to return back to the service area.
And you're able to track all the usage, so I mean, you can see what areas you need to put more in or less in or.
Exactly, yep. Full GPSs are installed inside the scooters itself as well.
So from OBU, we're, I mean, route-wise, are we going down Kickoo, going down Broadway? What, I mean, what do we?
Yeah, so, so, uh, I mean, we have definitely like a, a few different locations, like, but in terms of use cases, it could be, you know, at the Dollar Store, it could be at the pool, it could be at the library, it could be at a variety of different places that, uh, essentially, you know, generally these scooters are meant for anywhere from one to, you know, really under three-mile trips. Um, the battery life is, is actually twenty-five to thirty miles on a full charge. So we've seen in our other markets, you know, sometimes people ride very long distances, but that's really the, the sweet spot. So really kind of any of those locations that I mentioned and, and others, um, definitely.
My question being the flow, where do we want the flow at?
I would think slower streets, I would think maybe, but I, I don't know. I mean, you, you guys.
Yeah, we, we can send over the list, a preliminary list that we, we put together and, and, you know, kind of figure out what the best spots are. I think initially we have inventory for, you know, five docking stations to start. But the best part is initially, you know, we're all, um, locking into each other with security screws. So we actually don't have to bolt them in place. So if we say, hey, this location's not working out, let's dynamically reallocate that dock to another location. Very easy for us to do as well. So, but we can continue to work with you guys on, on where that we want to direct that flow and which locations would work best.
And that, that can be changed, I guess, pretty.
Yeah, easily, yeah, dynamically.
Could you explain, just because, I mean, I'm old and I haven't done this, but I mean, so how, how does a person actually like rent one and start it up? You might as well get some app on your phone.
Exactly, similar to an Uber or Lyft, you know, you could download the mobile app on the phone. Uh, it's actually, we have ID verification for, uh, preventing against underage riders. So you'd scan in your ID, a quick selfie, it would automatically, you know, approve or decline. And then you can put in your credit card or debit card details and you can be on your way. So you can just scan the, you know, QR code on the scooter, it'll start right up for you and you can, uh, yeah.
Unless you do, it's not like you can just grab one and take off on it.
Right, exactly.
I'm not worried about the rental and all, that's, that's more your deal. I'm worried about where they're going to be at, how they're going down the middle of the street.
Right, yep.
You go to, I was in San Diego a very while back and it was a fiasco down there.
Right, so we can easily geofence those areas and, and, you know, kind of educate the public accordingly as well.
Vote on it and not have any insight on what's why.
Well, it would only be mutually agreed upon locations. So we can't just say we want to launch here and kind of, uh, install in that area. It would only be approved by the city itself and only then we would be able to actually install.
Might send it involved in.
We, we can involve all city staff to determine the preliminary locations. I think Sid's going to do a tour tomorrow to lock down some locations and then he'll provide those potential locations to us and then we can vet those and then send those to you guys for further approval if necessary.
What, what's Ross take for that? Am I a little one concerned about it?
No, I mean, I don't, personally, I wouldn't want to get on Kickoo on one.
Harrison.
Yeah, Harrison, Kickoo, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think we need to stay off streets like that for sure. But if someone comes down, I don't know, Broadway or Union or, I mean, those smaller streets that would be safer to go along.
I mean, yeah, the transportation back and forth thing's indeed ideal. And once Kickoo is done, you know, at that point you have sidewalks, which I presume is where we're really wanting them at, not on the street.
Yeah.
You know, at that point you have to stretch out.
Absolutely, yeah.
Then you have, talking about going to eat north with no sidewalks, going down Kickoo.
Right.
On the busiest street we have.
But you could geofence them.
We can easily geofence or even, you know, reallocate the docking stations to.
Have sidewalks, it makes.
Right, then it makes sense to turn those on or.
Yeah, so we can get back to that list and, and, you know, kind of vote on, on those locations, but, um, that's pretty easy to do.
So, and it's not that I'm not, I don't share some of your concerns, but it's also, I think we need to consider, especially the college students are using them exactly for that, to go run to the Dollar Store, to run to an entertainment location or a fast food place or sit-down place. And those places are located on, I mean, it, it'll be a adjustment, but other communities have made the adjustment.
Right.
I mean, I think if we stick it down Union and Broadway and someone wants to run to a restaurant on, up by the mall, we've kind of defeated the purpose.
Same speed as a bicycle.
Yeah, it's fifteen miles an hour, exactly, very similar speed to a bicycle, how, how fast, sorry. Uh, it's, it's capped at fifteen miles per hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Golf cart speed.
Golf cart speed.
It's faster than a bicycle. Personally, I'd rather see kind of the whole package instead of just doing it. But. So where we're going to let them or we're not. And at some point, you know, we can expand that area such as Kickoo gets done, but, uh, are they already on Kickoo?
Just barely.
Yes, sir, campus.
Is it campus right now?
So how big an area? Yeah, so where, where can they go now? Where do you have the geofence?
So they are geofenced to the OBU campus?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can see it on the app as well. Um, it's like a green, green outline, but, uh, but yeah.
They can get over to Brahms.
Yep.
And you can probably run around.
In city bikes.
New campus.
Uh, yeah, not right now, we haven't extended the geofence, but, uh, but in the future, hopefully we can extend it to there.
Which is sidewalk.
Yeah. And we can easily change that geofence as well in terms of the service area very easily, so.
Pass that down, so. That's, that's where they're having geofence now.
Which is a place where you can.
Yeah, and a little bit, get to the upside, a little bit outside that.
Ben probably already has the app.
Thought I saw him riding one the other day.
Right.
As somebody that has ridden those several times, and I've ridden these several times. It's, it is, whenever the, talk about the geofenced area, like it, that dude, it lays down. You're, you're dragging a brick, so you don't want to go very far. And then whenever it does slow down in the, like, there's areas that I know in, in the city when we're riding, you know, the similar scooters, that it will, it'll start flashing and your speed's going to be cut down. And so, you can't, like, there are ways to keep people from being silly and, and doing things and, and, and really making it a, a fun thing that's intentional for, you know, one for recreation, but then also to be used as a, as a pretty significant mode of transportation, yeah.
And I, you know, I never thought of it just being rec- recreation. I always figured more transportation, but then I heard several people, younger folks, I mean, my age. But I mean, that's like, oh, I'm going to go over here and ride scooters this weekend. And that, that was their whole intent of going, was to ride the scooters.
We've had twelve-year-old birthday parties that we went, and that's all we did was ride scooters for hours and just have a blast, yeah.
Ironically, my son and his friends may have been the problem, because they rode them in San Diego, so they may have made you, they may have been the problem with you. But I mean, it, it's true. They used them when they would leave our, leave our house, they would drive over and.
You know, and I, I've seen these in other communities where I've had concerns, especially where they can just draw them anywhere. And one of the things I was very impressed with, with what you guys have done at OBU, is you have those docking stations saying, you got to pick them up there and you got to drop them off there.
And they're sitting everywhere.
Yeah, because, you know, just littering the town with those scooters is not.
Which is the docking, takes very well with.
Yeah, and if you don't take it there, well, guess what? You're still, the meter's still clicking, you know? So, I think that's a pretty good incentive to hold people's feet up high.
So, if the station's full, how do you deal with it?
So, basically, they can still end their ride right next to the station. And then our team will basically, you know, uh, be alerted and go pick up and proactively rebalance right away. So, that's basically how it works.
So, it's, but it still has to be right there.
Yeah.
Close by. You just can't say, well, I'm just going to drop, you know, here and nowhere. Nobody can start it up and take it unless they've got the app and they've paid for it.
Right.
So, staff's recommendation, we just?
Staff recommend approval. And we're happy to work through the logistics of placement and in the geofencing areas to, to ensure safety of the public and our folks using parks and things, things of that nature.
Are there questions? No wheelies, man.
No, I just, I just want staff to be involved, because the contract says that, uh, White Fox has the sole discretion of the docks were to be placed, so.
It's, you know, it's mutually agreeable.
Mutually agreeable.
Yes, that's what I want.
Yeah.
But the, the contract language is, it requires mutual agreement for placement.
And it states that in the contract.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
When ready, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
One second.
And second, so, Mr. Weaver. And Mr. Matthews. All right, motion and a second for approval on item ten, we will call the question. And motion passes seven zero. All right, item eleven, uh, is discussion and possible action to appoint a Lake, Shawnee Lake Advisory Committee to assist in revisions of the lake ordinances. I know it said, call.
You've got a, like, did I read it right?
You're, you're good.
All right, I'll make sure I didn't, I didn't get that wrong. So, I guess you're going to stay with, with me on that. So, so this, this came up and I know we'll have discussion up here on, on a Shawnee Lake Advisory Committee. And, um, I'm not sure what the scope of that will be, but, I mean, I'm, I'm sure, Mr. Weaver, you'd probably like to, to speak to it. So, I'll be glad to pass it to you.
This, that's been asked at, by the citizens, not only, um, lake leaseholders, but people that use and enjoy the lake. We, uh, we know that Shawnee, uh, Plin Lakes are our water, our reservoir for our water. And I think everybody wants to make sure everything's done to, uh, safe, keep that water safe and, um, and usable. I didn't know, Mr. Mayor, what mechanism you're looking at for forming a committee, but that was requested. It's something that I would hope that we could do now, is, is either name. There's a lot of people that have an interest, Mr. Mayor, that would like to be on that, that would serve very well as, uh, informed people on that committee. But I think it's a, a great idea. You know, we, we had a proposal several weeks ago that caused us to have this discussion. And it was to have items presented that, um, we really didn't have sufficient information to move forward with. And I hope that the suggestion for forming this committee is to come up with the ideas and the specific language, be agreeable with that language, um, with, with us and with the, the community, and move forward and actually have some meaningful proposals on ordinances that we present. So, I don't know what mechanism that we might want to try to use tonight. If it's establishing that we're going to set up a committee and then come back with, with names of volunteers, or if there are specific names. I don't have, um, specific names at all, but I have a lot of people that I know would be ideal and great on that committee.
Okay, so, what, what's, what's the intended scope of this? I mean, because there were, there were things that we discussed the other night that, you know, I thought we pretty well had worked out, like the, the, the boating regs. I mean, there was some, in fact, we tried to tweak it back and forth and there was proved to be probably a few too many to do it, you know, in that, that form. But in my understanding is those are, you know, easily fixed. Um, I don't, I don't know, are we looking to confine that to certain things or, or what? What is it we're wanting to do?
I'm not sure that, that we did clarify things before. I think that's what we need to do. There was a great deal of confusion. There were lots of ideas and thoughts, people much smarter than me, that presented ideas that have lived there longer or have different issues. And I think this was to mirror the suggestion, was to mir- to mirror the task force that was in two thousand and ten, that submitted ideas and proposals. And that was the, uh, what we formed as the, the, the direction. I think, uh, Frank Sims, I see in the back, I believe you were the commissioner then, Frank?
Yes.
And, uh, he, I believe chaired that committee. And that was, that's the language that we live with presently. And there, things have changed a lot and I'm.
Sure.
I was hoping you, Mr. Mayor, were advocating for this advisory committee. I certainly am, but I was hoping.
I'm trying to clarify it, is, is what I'm, I'm trying to do, because I, I don't know.
Yeah, there's.
Generally, you know, you've kind of got a scope of what you're going to be working on and, and I, I haven't really had that explained to me yet. Some of the items we discussed, I think, were probably pretty easy to, to fix. It's like the boating I brought up, um, you know, a minute ago. I, I think if we'd wanted to keep people here a little longer the other night, we probably could have gotten those worked out pretty good. But the commercial zones, um, didn't cause me a lot of heartburn, because there were so many other steps that somebody had to go through. If, if, um, you know, they were applying for that, there was still, I think, three or four more steps that they'd have to go through. So, there was lots of opportunity to, to talk on those. So, I'm just trying to clarify what it is that we want, you know, a, a committee to do. And I know I've been asked by, by folks about, you know, while we have a committee for this, we don't have a committee for like other neighborhoods or areas in town when, when we, when we talk about them. And you, you maybe can answer that, I, I don't know, but I.
If, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Um, you're aware that we had a, a War Two meeting inviting all the public to come?
Yeah.
And we had, you know, many more in the chamber than we have tonight. And there were lots and lots of, lots of concerns that were raised. And the citizenry of Shawnee does have concerns. And I think if we, on some of the other issues you're talking about, were as important to the citizens, then we might decide we needed a committee to advocate for that and, and look at language. But in this case, we had late leaseholders and interested parties that have expressed a lot of legitimate concerns that we couldn't answer in the simple language that we tried to present, that was attempted to present, um, prior to our meeting. So, I think the suggestion is that we do exactly what was done in two thousand and ten, have an advisory committee that meets, that works, that looks at all sides and pros and cons, and tries to come up with the language that, you know, you said you thought we could handle in that meeting. Many items we just aren't able to do that, wouldn't be able to do that.
Sure.
So, that's, that's the reason that I'm advocating for that. And again, I had hoped that, being on the agenda, I did not ask you to be put on the agenda. I was hoping that meant that, that you were taking the, the lead and advocating from listening to the citizens.
But no, I, I mean, I knew we wanted to have a discussion on it. So, this, this is the, this is the place we do that, so. Absolutely.
I suppose go around the horseshoe. Um, I think in, over the course of the weekend, since the agenda came out on Friday, uh, it was actually my understanding that the kayak proposal was going to be on the agenda, and it's not, um, which is fine. Um, I've been, over the course of the weekend, yes, no, and I don't know on this. Because, um, just trying to think of precedent and also what's working and what's not. If you remember back a few weeks ago, or a few months ago, time seems to run together, we had a fairly significant issue on a development at Thirty-Ninth Street involving ordinances and that kind of stuff. And that came through here. We deferred it, dealt with the issues at hand, went through planning, it went through, came back through here. And a, an issue that was significant to an entire community of Northridge, I mean, we had a hundred and fifty or so signers on a petition. Um, we dealt with. And so, I mean, on, on the surface, when I saw it, I was like, yeah, sure, fine, hey, Lake Advisory Committee. When I got to thinking, I mean, I've got a big addition going in. I mean, a bulldozer caught fire thirty feet behind my fence last week and thought I was living in the country again. And nobody asked me if I wanted it there. I mean, we didn't establish a Northridge Committee. We dealt with it through the channels of staff and government. And while it may take time, instead of one, more than one meeting, I mean, we, I don't know that we've effectively used public forums like we could, like, like we did.
Right.
To, uh, to advise the process. I'm just trying to figure out what hole in the function of government this would fill. And I'm having, that's why I said I've been yes, no, and I don't know, because we have, I mean, the way I understand it would work now is if we, if we established a committee, which if we do establish a committee, it should be done by, uh, application, I would assume, in the way we do have done other committees. But that's maybe neither here nor there. The, my understanding is then it would go Lake Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, here. And I understand the thoughtful input of citizens is, I think we all want that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we have Planning Commission, we have public forums, and we have here. I just don't know what, what, what part of the process is missing or broken that would require... I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm saying, I, I'm saying I've thought all weekend, because if people look, it's literally just a one item, there's nothing for us to click and read, there's no re, like, it's, it is a dis. I don't know what, like, what opportunity to hear from the public this would present that we don't already have at our disposal. I mean, I, I agree with, with the, the, the ward meeting that was held, which I would have probably preferred to see as like a, build more as a public meeting, because it is the city's lake, not simply Ward Two. And I, I mean, I respect that it was a Ward Two meeting, but there was some misunderstanding about who could and couldn't come. I just think we, we need to use that process. We have the Planning Commission, we have City Commission. I'm not sure what hole in the function of government this fills.
Well, I'll say, I, I'm not sure that it, we're suggesting that it would require this at all, Commissioner. Um, suggesting that we want to have, there was a lot of input and it's probably my, it was, I did call it as a Ward Two, Commissioner. I don't know how there could have been any misunderstanding that anyone wasn't, um, open for that, including the commissioners. I didn't invite anybody, but, um, you know, it was, I guess, the city attorney notified the, the crowd that the reason that others weren't there is because we typically can only have three. So, he gave the defense of why there weren't other commissioners there. But there were a lot of questions, there were a lot of issues, and there's a lot of things to deal with, um, what goes on at the lake that, that what we presently have on the books, it worked. And so, I'm, I'm merely, I'm asking fellow commissioners once again for consideration of setting up this Lake Advisory Board. You can set whatever parameters you want, give it a month, give it two months, give it three months, to identify what items need addressing, because there's a lot of them, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. And I would just hope that, you know, had you been at that meeting, you would have heard those concerns directly. I think many of you have had those concerns shared with you, um, by emails and communications since that time. And I know the, you know, there's, there's many in the audience right now that could speak to this, but this isn't the opportunity, I guess, to ask them to do that. Um, my bottom line, excuse me. My bottom line is I think that lake's very important. It's very important to the residents that live there. It's very important to the citizens that use it. It's very important to the citizens that, that we all partake in the water supply and try to protect it as best we can. And I think some evaluation and study and input from the people that are represented, whether, we would certainly want to have people from, you know, the city, not just like leaseholders or voters or, um, those that, that use it. We would want to have a wide array of, of who we have on that committee. And I'm just thinking if it's a, you all seem to indicate you don't think there's any need to do that, just because we haven't had other issues where we've set up a task force. Well, there is a little precedent for this Lake Advisory Committee, and that was in two thousand and ten. And it was very successful, but things have changed a lot since two thousand and ten. So, my, uh, my hope and desire, and actually, I, I thought it being on the agenda, I was very optimistic that we were going to have an opportunity to move forward with that, with this, without having to have, um, any, any negative application to it whatsoever.
The, the advisory committee from two thousand and ten, uh, do you, is there a, a list of what their roles were with?
Yes.
And, and do you know as, as to why that, that body is no longer functioning?
It was, it was a.
Short term.
Yeah, it was a short term.
It's a short term.
It was very well defined as to, uh, you know, we can almost use that as a blueprint, but it was very well defined what the scope of their job was and when they were to report it, it was reported and, and went through the process. And I, if I'm not mistaken, some of those recommendations were not accepted. There were, um, some that were, some that weren't, um, but it had great input from all parties. And, you know, we have not only leaseholders, but we have landowners that we need to take into consideration, because they're a part of our, our group as well. So, yes, there, there were good parameters and really good languages to how it was set up.
Would, would you, would you be, um, would it be prudent to ask to look at that and defer this to a future meeting?
Sure, I'll be honest with you, I did not put this on the agenda. I've, uh, as, as all of you know, I'm just recuperating from back surgery. I have not had any communication with a single commissioner during this time in the last three months. Um, I had no, uh, input on having this on the agenda. Uh, this is what I've advocated for, but, um, and I've continued to do that. But I, uh, I, I think we have, before we run something else before the commission for, um, ordinances and changes at the lake, we think we need to have serious discussion about trying to have either this or some other form to address those issues. So, yeah, I mean, it's not, not me that would defer it, but I would, I'd be fine with deferring. I just hope before we bring something before us again, that we've addressed it in the manner that, that I'm asking. And if it's not in that manner, maybe, uh, something that's, that's acceptable to, to, to the commissioners.
So, I guess, what year do we start letting people live out there? About two thousand and ten?
Nineties?
Nine?
No, uh, it was the nineteen nineties, I believe.
Nineties.
Has it been that long ago? I mean, you know, because that's really what's driving this whole thing, is we went from, you know, cabins to homes out on the lake. People have huge investments and, you know, two folk, you don't own the property. I mean, if we're dealing with the core engineers, you don't have any stuff. I mean, you know, they'll kind of just like the, they just did a deal, you got a thirty-five foot buffer. I mean, you know, they'll come, just like the, they just did a deal, you got a thirty-five foot buffer, you cannot mow it. You know, and regardless of mowing permits or whatever, so. It's so much different than what it is on any core engineer lake, uh, that we let the, you know, city, the leaseholders do. And then it's dirt cheap, the leases are, compared to what you'd have to pay for a property on a lake that just adjoints core parks. And then you, you know, so it's, yeah, I, I don't know what the scope of it is, yet I think the people that have huge investments probably need some insight into it, but ultimately, the cities, you know, just like the core, is gonna be in charge of what it is, but, uh, you know, I've, I've always thought the lease stuff is just totally crazy, you know, when you can go lease for seven hundred dollars a year, you know, uh, who knows what, you know, the, the market value that property is. You know, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, that, you know, they oughta sell it all off and people buy the property and, uh, you know, keep the buffer at the city, just like the core does.
Well, this is so much more than just the leaseholders' concern. Uh, there are many leaseholders that have come forward, but there, there are boaters, there are people that use the lake, that there are guidelines and restrictions that, that can, um, that, that dictate how those, those boaters use it, and how it does affect that property. And the city chose many years ago, well, if it was in the nineties, for those leases to be available, then, you know, they're in demand, they're, they're in a high demand and have been, uh, for a lot of reasons. One, I, I don't think of it because of the cost, but you might think that that's what the attractive part is, for somebody to put in whatever their personal investment is, increases that they can't take with them. So, you know, that's, there's many people that have put their investment on property that's leased that they don't know.
They can sell it.
And, and they can sell it.
So, you know, market value, still market value.
But, but we, uh, but those people that live there, I think, it's just like the road maintenance. There have been complaints about how many roads out there, the, the, the people that live there have complained, and are very understanding as far as Brad and his crew, that we finally have a bulldozer that will work, and, or a road grader that'll do the work. But we are also citizens of Shawnee, and, and I don't want that to be forgotten, that we, leaseholders on one, um, we should have as much right to fair representation as anyone in town, because we are part of town. And I think many times, we up here, we's a, you know, in parentheses, we forget that, and we neglect that, and I think that has occurred. And maybe it's because of, of the mindset that, well, you get the property for cheap, therefore, you need to live with all of the, the inconveniences that there are. And I just don't think that's fair as a citizen. And so, does that answer your question, Mark?
Not really. To what, to what Daniel said, staff went to great lengths, legal's gone to great lengths over the winter. Um, several Commissioners, Mark, being an avid boater, um, I, I looked at the boat stuff as, as another eye to go through the boating regulations. Um, there was requests for some modifications to be made in that meeting, that we probably could have gotten done in that meeting if it was kind of a distracted meeting, so.
The boat regs that we're talking about, correct?
No, but I think some of those would, would probably be included, I think as to where it could be an all-inclusive bit of language that we'd work on, and try and get the best language that we can get, whether it be boating, or whether it be for affecting the leaseholders, or affecting the use of the city property.
But, I mean, the bo- the boating thing is probably way down on the list, I would think, I mean, I would think those could be ironed up pretty easily, pretty quickly.
Probably.
But this has state statutes.
Right, I mean, personally, I'm good with it.
A lot of what that was, was dealing with what the state law is and what's required, so, yes.
I mean.
I guess, so what's, what would be the scope, or, or, the commercial part's gonna, if, if it passes as was already done, that's gotta come back through planning and back through the Commission. For, for the approvals on, on the commercialization out there. So, there's nothing set that's going to happen, there's no applications, it's an application process, it's all gotta be reviewed for there, just like anywhere else in Shawnee.
Right.
It, it, it'll happen just like next door to me.
And they'll be.
It's the same process.
Least, least two opportunities.
That we don't have all of these other hoops to, to deal with, I mean, how long are we gonna keep dragging this out? I mean, it's not legal to go out and throw anchor and, and swim off your boat right now, 'cause people do it, that's changed in this modification. But we haven't got that passed yet. It's not legal, you know, to, to swim off of your property, from what I understand, people do it, but it's in there to change, to modernize it, but we can't get it done.
Well, your question, how long, I, I think that would be up to what we decide on from forming this Advisory Committee, whether it's a, a short-term solution where we roll up our sleeves and get right after it, or it's a more long-term that is, uh, you know, possibly as inclusive as it can be to address everything that we might need to address. I mean, I don't think we're trying to, um, rush or cover up anything by what proposals were submitted before. It's just, I think we were in a slowdown mode of, hey, you know, let's, let's look at this a little bit further, because there were a lot of concerns that were, what, not, they weren't, they, by me. I mean, heck, I know so little that the concerns that I had were what would affect me personally, but it's, that's such a bigger scope than what affects me as a citizen of War, as a Commissioner. And there was, I mean, the people are here tonight because they are concerned, and, uh, so I, I don't know why we can't allow some time to have some thoughtful input on language that none of us knew was even coming before us, until it was there on Friday and we considered it on Monday. So, I would just ask, slow down the train, come up with a mechanism, and again, I, I wouldn't have even asked, put it on the agenda tonight for lack of, of willingness to prepare and even understanding to, to prepare, but I, this is the first time I've even been out in public except for physical therapy, and I can tell you, I'd, I'd rather be anywhere but here, but, um, it's, uh, it's, and, and I don't, I don't mean that physically. I don't, I don't mean that in any way, except to say this is, this is difficult physically. Um, but, you know, I don't wanna beat this thing with a horse, but, um, beat it with a stick.
There you go.
But, but again, I didn't put this on the agenda.
No, you didn't.
I was pleased that it was, and I'd like to see us do something with it.
I, I guess I have one, you can probably answer, but it's more to, to everybody. I totally respect slowing it down, like, 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 I've said, I've been yes, no, and I don't know. I'm currently probably an I don't know. But when you talk about, or when, not just you, but when we've talked about slowing it down, isn't that what we've done? I mean, that's, I mean, we, we, you asked us to defer it.
Yeah, we did.
And we did.
We did.
We've had a public forum, which has generated.
Well, well attended.
Well, well attended.
Yep.
Uh, we've had discussions through email, Amy and I are new friends, uh, through email, and, uh, I mean, I, I, I think, I just wanna make sure that whether we do this or not, it's understood, like, we wanna hear from the public on it. Like, we've, we wanna get it right. The question is, how do we get it right? And, um, I mean, I've tried, as Amy pointed out, the comprehensive plan requires us to be transparent. I feel I've been transparent, and that I've been yes, no, and I don't know, I'm still an I don't know. And, you, you know, like, I mean, that was one of my questions, and I don't know that even we're prepared to answer, like, we've talked about the duration of it. I don't know in fifteen minutes if we're really prepared to decide, like, it needs to be thirty days, it needs ninety days, it needs to be perpetual, like. I, I don't know how to communicate that we want the public to be involved in this process. We need the public to be involved in this process. And still, we have to figure out the right vehicles for that to happen. And that's about as thoughtful as I can be on it.
Time is on our side from a standpoint, you know, the lake is a seasonal entity. You know, we, another thirty days, the season has passed us, you know, collecting on fees and doing whatever we're doing is kinda muted at that point. So, I mean, if we defer it, you know, we can give it six months and still be all right, because really, what we're planning on is next season, not this season. Yeah, 'cause most of it's recreational stuff we're dealing with, I presume, and, and the cultural aspect.
A lot, I think, kind of.
Yeah, and, you know, which, these people will be more so, you know, where the, uh, kayak dock is, and a lot of things going on that we just, it's still up in the air, so. You know, really, even if we didn't do it, we still hadn't voted on the regs, which is gonna be August, which really, we missed the season anyway. So, you know, I think putting it off, but we're not really giving up anything.
I'd like to see us look at even the process, because like, people have talked about, like, staff has been working on this since, like, end of last year, start, like, I'd like to start the public forums then. Because we're wasting time of staff, because they put a lot of hours, a lot of hard work into it, came up with something. Was it right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm not commenting on that, like, the document we got, prob- I mean, we deferred it, so clearly enough of us and enough of the public felt there needed to be changes. I'd rather not waste staff's time and do this process along the way.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I know you gotta, you gotta start somewhere, and that's tricky in writing ordinances.
This is what it is, and we learn as we go.
Could I, since I have not done a very good job of trying to explain to you all what the, the benefit of having the previous one, could we call on Frank Sims, who was chairman of that, and, and address this Commission? Would you all give us the permit, uh, permission for Frank to, to speak and just discuss? What your, Frank, you're here, so we, I've got the right to ask for you, if they'll allow.
I have no problem.
Okay, Frank, would you come and just talk about the, what, what the purpose of your committee was, how it was set up, and how you presented it?
You're in trouble now.
This is totally off the cuff.
He knows not to come anymore, doesn't he?
I'll dress a little better next time, not like where. Uh, basically, our, the committee was set up by the Commission to look at, uh, specific ordinances, the, uh, at that time, the state, uh, had taken over. We, let me back up, we were managing all of the lake lease sites and paying the state, excuse me, a fee for each lake, you know, basically giving them, uh, the money we collect. So, we decide, we were trying to figure out, should we give the school and commission back their land and let them lease directly? Or should we con- excuse me, continue to work through the commission, uh, CLO? So, that was the biggest decision we made, and then there was a lot of discussion about lease regs, which is when we determined, uh, when I first bought my place out there in nineteen eighty-four, uh, the lake fee was fifty bucks a year. It went to, um, two hundred, maybe late, mid to late nineties. Um, our committee determined, based on what CLO was doing, um, that the six hundred dollar rate as a starting rate with a two percent CPI added to it each year was a fair rate and a substantial increase from what it had been in the past. The, the committee spent about six months, we met probably twice a month, and, uh, worked with staff to actually formulate the new ordinance. So, it was, it just had a lot of input from users at the lake, the people who live there. Uh, skiing and swimming was pretty new at that time, jet skis, et cetera. So, it was really to reevaluate lake usage, and I think that's where, frankly, you are right now, is looking at expanded use. Um, you know, we've had several accidents out there recently, so there's, we need to think through what we're doing. I think the biggest point is, uh, the thirty-odd thousand citizens of Shawnee rely on the lake for their water.
Right.
So, I think the commercial concept, I understand how it will go through planning, uh, and other areas, but I think the commercial concept is really something that needs to be well thought out, and the impact on the lake. I understand there was a tourism study commissioned, we haven't received that yet, to my knowledge. Um, I think we also need to understand what the impact will be on our water source. Two-thirds of our water comes out of the Twin Lakes, the other third out of West Watkins. So, that, in my mind, there's, it's a, a big, complex issue that could be resolved very quickly, uh, just having a conversation. I'm glad to answer any question, I'm, I think I kinda got off of what the committee was set up for.
General Committee, lake owners or what people, was it?
It was city staff, uh, lake leaseholders, and I believe there were some other citizens of community, uh, folks involved. It was a group of, as I recall, about twelve people. Uh, it's a pretty simple, you know, easy group, that had input, planning then brought it back to the Commission with their recommendation.
Remember how long they served, Frank?
I, I believe it was about six months, it could have been a little bit longer, but about six months was the operational period, and as I said, I think we met about twice a month.
Did, did you speak directly to planning, or did you, uh, give it to staff, and then staff presented, like, typically, like they are?
Justin Erickson, who was the, uh, planning director at that time, actually chaired the committee.
Okay.
Or, I guess, co-chaired the committee. So, planning was directly involved.
It was directly involved, and that planning has been directly involved in what we're currently working on as far as the, the regs and the, um, the direction that we've, we're heading right now, I believe.
It didn't come from planning the first time.
It didn't come from planning.
It did or did not.
It did not.
Yeah.
My understanding was that the city, I know the city attorney and the city manager both worked very hard on that language. Uh, beyond the two of you, I don't know what other input there was.
Planning Department had a review of it, Police Department provided their input before Chance and I even began, or it resumed.
So, there, there were, like, and I think that's what, um, Mr. Sims is saying, is being intentional about having as many people that we can put hands on this and say, this is a good idea, this is a good idea, this is a good idea, without taking so long that it, nothing gets done. And, and I, 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 gosh, I think that we've, we've listened to enough of our citizens to say, hey, we wanna, we wanna be sure that we get this right, that, that I, I am this, under the same mindset as I, I wanna think about this and, and would, would love to have more people than myself saying their opinion and hear more of those opinions and, and, gosh. Cause it's, we only get one, well, we get two lakes, but normally, you don't get two lakes, we only get one body of water, yeah, so.
But, I mean, I think everybody up here is very clear on how important the, the lakes are to us. I mean, obviously, the number one thing is it's our drinking water, and, I mean, I think we all understand that. But I think we also know that how many lakes around the country have, you know, done, you know, activities on their, on their drinking water and done it safely. I mean, that, that can be done if it's, it's done right, we've all, we've all seen it many, many times.
We had a hard time finding municipal water supplies that were utilized as we use ours. Um, you know, you look at, uh, Hefner as an example, and there's no skiing or.
Right, right.
Anything else, so there's a, there's a lot of components to that.
There are, and it's done a lot of different ways, the last I heard, and it's maybe been a million years, a draper, you can't swim, but you can ski, which I never have understood that, but, 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 I mean, it is what it is. We're not deciding that, so.
I think the point that the, the group has made previously is there's a hundred-odd people, um, that have been there for a number of years that have seen through the years various, uh, things that have changed out there, and it's, uh, you know, if we're gonna make new ordinances, we need to be able to enforce them. And some of those were, that, things that were addressed, uh, was the city's, uh, law enforcement presence out there. And we're hearing other things tonight about a, a boat dock for the police, uh, to have their boat in the water and ready to go. And if, you know, if we're trying to stimulate more tourism, more people on the water, we're gonna need to be able to respond to it. And so, I think that's all this group wants to do, is, is be able to talk, I mean, be able to communicate the concerns and the needs.
Sure.
And see how the city would address those.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What other discussion have we got? You know, the, the only question in my mind is still, I mean, we're just be adding another layer. I mean, we have opportunity to speak at planning and here at, at commission, so, you know, but if we, we feel we need to add another, I mean, that, that can be done if we decide to do that.
Well, again, I would advocate that we do that. That's what, what my request is, and I would ask you all to allow that this advisory board be set up and go ahead and give us whatever parameters you want, you know, Commissioner Sehorn mentioned the, the, the heavy season, the six months have, uh, have come upon us, so maybe, maybe that would be a, an appropriate amount of time, and I don't think it's ever gonna be a bad idea to have the citizens directly involved in, uh, working on language and trying to make it the best that it can be.
We always welcome their input.
Sure, and I think this is just a way.
Phone calls and.
Okay.
My, my understanding is that if, it was, if we did something like this, it would be a mayor appointment, and we would ratify it like we do all the others. Am I, am I wrong, or?
No, Mr. Mayor, you're not incorrect. The only exception to that would be if, if there was a desire to create a permanent or standing committee, which would be a different procedure. But a, a committee, as Mr. Sims discussed, it was, it was done in two thousand and ten, and what I think the bulk of the board is discussing would be
Right.
mayoral appointment subject to ratification by the commission.
Right, right.
And that's why, Mr. Mayor, I thought that you had brought it, because you were prepared to.
Well, actually, and truthfully, I did, because I knew that was something you had asked for, and I, and I, and I knew it was a discussion we wanted to have, and I know we've had it quite a while, and that's okay. We'll stay here and have it as long as we need to, but I, but I knew, I knew that you did, so I got it, I got it on, I got it on for you.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, what, decide where to go from here?
I think I'm still where I was, and if we're gonna form the committee, we need, I'm not opposed to it, or, like, if we're gonna do it, we need, we need the parameters. And I don't know that I'm comfortable on the parameters yet. Parameters meaning how long, you know?
We can have that discussion.
Who are we, who, I, I know it's your appointment, but I think we potentially wanna have input on what depart, city departments or which stakeholders ought to have a place on it, like, um. That's just where I am on it. I mean, I'd like to have some discussion about if we're gonna do it, how we're gonna do it correctly, and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would hate for it to be, you know, a long-term thing. I would want it to be a short-term thing if, if we have ideas that need to be discussed. I'm sure we already know those ideas, so, um, you know, I don't, I, I would hate for it to be a, a long thing and miss another season, you know? You know, whether it's you wanna do more stuff out there, or you got concerns out there, the folks that have concerns out there wanna get those addressed, wanted to get that done quickly too, I would think, so. I wouldn't want it to go long, three months, or. I don't know what, what the right number is.
I would think we could get sufficient input and, and roll up the sleeves in, in a three-month period. I would think that would be fair. But I would, I would think we'd probably have several options here. We could either move forward with the green to, to form it, and then come back with specifics as to what the guidelines will be, that the mayor from his appointees would be, and a process for people to apply and express an interest and willingness to be on that committee.
Well, we've had people reach out and do that, so, I mean, I've, I've, I've put names down just to be prepared for tonight, so. That's something, if we get to that point, we can, we can discuss, and we could have someone from the planning department, or with, with, with that group, I would think. So, and obviously, chose to be involved with them, kind of writing anything, so.
All right, well, with that, and I would, I'll make the motion that we do, we form a Shawnee Lake Advisory Committee. The mayor, um, obviously, it's his appointees by choice, um, and just to, to move this forward, I make the motion that we do that, and, and try and address the concerns when the language is presented, um, as to how you will make the, the appointments.
Could, could I ask you to clarify one thing in your motion?
Yes, sir.
I mean, was there a length of time that you were asking for?
Uh, I'll say three months in my motion, since you suggested that. You know, I think that would be an appropriate amount of time. So, that motion would be, uh, over a three-month period, within three months to come back and submit a report, and then obviously working with all necessary departments of, of law enforcement and planning, and, uh, and all, all that need to be involved.
Just click and enter. Say, take the second, so our, if they, if they brought their recommendations to us for the, the second meeting in October, is that some right to you?
Yes, sir. If you looked at the calendar, then yes, sir.
Well, I'll make sure you're, you're double checking, making sure Travis is in.
It's the fifteenth.
I don't know what the dates would be.
November fifteenth would be.
They're pointing it on.
So, it's one.
So they'd have to be done.
Be middle of October, yeah.
Another week, they'd have to be done by, so that they could get it on the agenda, if that's, if that's what I'm hearing you say, Mr. Weaver.
I'm sorry.
I, I just making sure that's what I'm, I'm hearing you say in your motion, is that they would have to get to, say, by the, the second meeting in October, which means they'd have to get it to staff by the thirteenth of October, so they could get it on the agenda.
And, and I think that's fair, and I, I would also say if, um, if tabling this item is more, uh, acceptable to the commission, I wanna get this right too, and I know you, everyone else does, but, you know, I guess I'm driving this train tonight, and I came in here thinking that you were Mr. Mayor, so it's kinda put me in a position of having to try to not, I have no organization and no specifics. So, if, if you all would have more comfort with just, again, deferring this, Mark said, Mr. Sehorn said, we don't have an urgency on this, and if we could give it a little bit of time and come back and have a, a more meaningful discussion, that I don't have to say, I really don't know, and I'm not prepared to, to suggest specifics, um, I would be willing to change my motion and ask that we defer this and bring it back up with specifics in, in visiting with you, Mr. Mayor, so that you being the one in charge of that, um, we can have acceptable language, that hopefully the commissioners will have agreeable to, and staff, and the city manager and attorney, and we get all parties involved. So, I, I think probably the best thing to do would be to ask that we defer, if that's acceptable. If not, I'd be happy to stick with my motion and ask that we set up and hope that there's a majority that would agree with that.
So, so a motion's been made, and they either need to be withdrawn or
Right.
open for a second.
Yeah, I would think you could have two motions, but, but, um.
Yeah, and, and there's not been a second, and, and that's why I would withdraw that, and I would withdraw that if there's not a, uh, majority that would want to allow this committee to get started and get on their work. If, if there's a reason for us to defer and have additional, um, conversation, you know, minds are made up, then there's really not a need for that. Um, I would just go say, we have an opportunity to, uh, be meaningful and insightful on what we do there.
Commissioner Weaver, just to clarify, is it withdrawn, or was that posed as a hypothetical?
It's still hypothetical.
So we, we either need to have a second, or, we either need to have a second before there's further discussion, or, or allow it to die for lack of a second.
Well, then, then I will withdraw my motion and then make my motion that we defer this to a future meeting.
I wanna say that, um, I appreciate that, because I think I would've had to vote no, because I'm not ready to support it, because I don't have the details I want.
Commissioner Matthews, we still don't have a second.
Oh, I thought he withdrew it.
And then the second motion to defer to a future meeting.
I'll, I'll make a second to defer to the, the second.
Okay, so we have a motion. We'll, we'll just get this done quick. You have a motion and a second to defer to a, a future meeting, so we'll call the question.
Now, now we can discuss.
Now you can discuss.
Okay, okay, sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate your willingness to reconsider, um, because I was gonna vote no on something that I don't know that I oppose, and I didn't, wasn't comfortable doing that, but I believe, I don't know if, if we can get to a yes, I don't think we'll actually waste time, because I think we would've spent this time trying to figure out the details in the meantime. So I, I, I appreciate you allowing us to work as a unit and continue to receive in, in, input from stakeholders and staff, um, that can get us to something that hopefully we're all really comfortable with. And, because I think that, that's certainly my heart intent, is we wanna get it right.
Yeah.
And, uh, instead of a motion and then work our way through it, I think we could perhaps have a good package that we can really support at the next, um, commission meeting, so.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to clarify.
Yes, yes, sir.
Commissioner Matthews, we talked about a package, is that something that if this motion were to pass, we'd like staff to put together a proposed scope of the committee, size of the committee, timeframe of service and reporting, consistent with the discussions?
Yeah, rather than, rather than us trying to patchwork a motion through, I think we could have.
I think that would be helpful.
Cause then, I think, then we actually know what we're voting, yes or no on it.
Well, no, that was one of the first things I asked, is, you know, what's the, what's the scope of this, so, you know, it's, it's kinda hard to get your hands on.
And, and I hope the public will understand, I think this is part of us slowing down the process to get it right, and.
Well, I can, I can multitask.
Okay, very good. So, any other discussion? Man, I wish, I wish we'd have done this months ago, actually, you know? Feel like we'd kinda missed this summer, and, and folks that have concerns have had to wait, you know, to get them addressed. But it is what it is, and this is. All right, so we have a motion and a second, right? So we call the question, referring to a future meeting. And that motion passes seven zero, so.
Okay.
Discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All righty, thank you guys very much. All righty, we are up to, okay, item twelve, discussion and consideration of a variance request for a minimal, minimum separation between proposed driveway and the Harrison and Independence Street intersection. I believe Seth is up.
Yes, sir, I'm back, so, uh, like the, like the mayor just said, this is for a variance for a proposed driveway separation at the intersection of Harrison and Independence. So, uh, Scooter Coffee has pro, proposed a new right-in, right-out driveway approximately a hundred and three feet north of the intersection. They're on the northwest corner on that empty lot.
Right.
Um, our subdivision regulations, uh, are that they have to be at least a hundred and fifty foot to have a drive from that intersection. Um, with that said, the, the applicant's really done everything they can possibly do to accommodate the regs.
Right.
Um, their, their property line sits only a hundred and thirty-seven feet north of the intersection, so they've shifted the drive as far north as they can. Um, in addition to that, they've, they've made it a right-in, right-out drive, um, tried to eliminate some of the left-hand turns. And, um, and I should also mention that since Harrison is technically State Highway eighteen, um, uh, uh, we had input from ODOT's traffic engineers in looking at this, and they, they said they would approve the driveway permit if we were to as the city. So, um, with that, it went before Traffic Commission and was approved unanimously on June twenty-second, and staff recommends approval of the right-in, right-out drive in accordance with the approved building permit plans. So with that, I would answer any questions or speak to any concern you guys have.
If I'm hearing that right, they'll have to go south down Harrison.
Yeah, it'll be, it's the only way they can get in is southbound off Harrison, and then they have.
And then they'll have to go westbound on Independence.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's.
Then go right on.
Harrison going south.
They, they can go southbound on Harrison, yeah, so they can. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, good point, good point, okay.
And, and scooters would also have a full access drive on Independence, so you could get in and out in either direction on Independence.
Okay.
So, but you would at least, if you're on Harrison, you don't have to turn onto Independence to then turn on into the drive, you could just go ahead and go in.
Cause I was seeing a long drive for coffee there, if you had to go that way, yeah.
How are you gonna prevent legal left turns?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the caveat there. I think this, to be candid with you, I think the stop signal will prevent left turns. I think that generally, at most time of day, there's gonna be cars queued beyond the, the, they're, they're not gonna be able to turn left there, um, because of the traffic, I think.
I think we underestimate the will of people running coffee.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that lot's never nobody needs free anything, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's obviously you guys' decision, but the other option is to not have a drive on Harrison Street.
And ODOT did approve.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, so I think that's a pretty good, and your recommendation was for approval?
Yes, sir.
As well as Traffic Commission?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there any signage we can do, like no left turn?
There will be no left turn signage, as well as the, the white indicators that are up, so they'll, I mean, it's not impossible to turn left, no, but like, Commissioner said, that, you know, underestimating the will, they would have to veer out and then go back to the left and, and maybe happen.
I think we might end up putting some of those up in some other places in town, just, just because, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Travis. Daniel. All righty, so we have a motion for approval on item twelve, now we'll call the question. And it passes seven zero. Item thirteen, discussion and consideration of AWM Real Estate LLC's appeal of an administrative order regarding the demolition of the structure located at A-1 South Beard Street, and Joe was up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, you heard from the, uh, applicant during citizen comment. This is the property that she was referencing. Uh, it has come to our attention, uh, through counsel in Oklahoma City, that, for an estate, that this property is likely owned, uh, by an estate that is being probated. She reached out, Susan Shields of McAfee and Taft, uh, and communicated that with me. Uh, I was able to discuss with her, uh, deferring this. Mr. Allison and I have discussed that, to give the estate thirty days to address the concerns or pull a permit for demolition themselves. They have agreed to do that. Um, I was able to speak, uh, with the representative that was present, apparently they had just been playing phone tag, and so that message hadn't been received, hence her presentation at that time, but she was agreeable and amenable, uh, to this path. So at this time, it's staff's recommendation that we defer this appeal item to approximately thirty days to the second meeting in August, to allow them time to comply with, to either demolish the structure or to obtain the necessary repairs, uh, to bring it back into compliance. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question to defer.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Commissioner Weaver and Sehorn, all righty, and we will call the question. Motion to defer, second meeting in August.
It was just a motion to defer.
Motion to defer, yeah. Uh, it was, uh, Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Sehorn. There we go, and it passes seven zero. All righty, so we have, uh, item fourteen, public hearing and, uh, consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at thirty-three zero-zero-one Lake Road, containing approximately four acres from A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with a CUP, condition used purpose with a purpose of a waiting venue with sale of consumption of alcoholic beverages on premises. Case number CUP zero-one dash twenty-one, applicant Greta Mattson, enter. Case number CUP 01-21, applicant Greta Mattson Enterprises LLC. Public hearing rescheduled from June 21st to July 19, 2021. So, Rachel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Rachel Klein, I'm the city planner, so I'm gonna hit you up for the next three items. You have stated everything there is to know. It is a request for a conditional use permit in A-1 zoning to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. The applicant has already applied for the other ABLE requirements, and you may know the property as, I believe it was the Homeowners Associat... No, excuse me, Home Builders Association.
Right.
That's the building that we're talking about. It did go before the planning commission and was recommended approval unconditionally.
So I think there's been a waiting venue there for quite a while, so the difference is probably they're just getting their stuff through the ABLE commission.
Right, the main difference that I understand is the actual sale of alcohol consumption was probably already occurring.
I think it probably was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Gentlemen, have any questions? I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendation. Second.
I have a discussion, do we need to have...
Public hearing? We have to open the public hearing. Yeah, so, yeah.
Do we need to withdraw?
Apologies.
We've gotta open that, so it's if you have any questions for Ms. Klein and then...
It's really just not proper yet, so I don't think there's a need to withdraw, we'll just open the public hearing, we can meet after.
Okay, alrighty. Does have any other questions for you? I guess with that, we can open the public hearing. So we'll ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor.
In favor?
In favor, yes, ma'am.
I said please.
Yeah, alrighty. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition?
I think she wants to speak.
Yeah, oh, no, I mean, no, well...
Did you want to speak?
Sure, well...
Absolutely, come on up.
So, just to clarify, it has been a, used as a venue for a lot of years. It's a wonderful treasure that the city has, and we just want to continue offering to local residents to use it as an event venue, and then also outside of Shawnee, of course, as well. So, we just ask for approval unconditionally.
Very good, thank you for coming to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Alrighty, well, with that, we will close the public hearing. Any other discussion up here? I think now we can entertain a motion, can we, now, sir?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to make a motion. Daniel, second. Alright, thank you, guys. Alright, so we have a motion and a second, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, two width, part of the west half of the Northwest Section 23 Township 10 North Range 2 East, city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, AKA Lot 1A, Mosler Track, general location known as 33001 Lake Road, from zoning classification A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with a CUP, conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, so we have a motion and a second, we will call the question. And it passes seven zero. Alrighty, item fifteen, another public hearing, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezon property located at 15515 Perry Road, containing approximately 1.5 acres from A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with a CUP, conditional use permit for the purpose of a garage cottage guest house, ADU accessory dwelling unit. Case number CUP 02-21, applicant Edward and Sandra Moore. Public hearing rescheduled from June 21st, 2021 to July 19, 2021, and Ms. Klein is up again.
Again, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Again, another CUP application. This is for a neat little accessory dwelling unit that is a garage with the guest cottage built on top of it. There are guidelines for the accessory dwelling use as far as the building goes, and then the conditional use permit requirement to have the guest cottage on top of the garage. This was heard by the planning commission, and they voted to recommend approval unanimously.
Okay, so that's staff recommendation, that is?
Yes.
Okay. So we can open the public hearing on this, we will see, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor? Come on down, sir, come on down, so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name's Ed Moore, and I'm making the application, my wife Sandy. I'm applying for this because we need a garage, that's what I want. She's applying for it because she wants a third bedroom, so one of our 21 grandchildren can come home for Christmas. Basically what we're doing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Alright, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Alright, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And any discussion up here? Good, everybody good?
I'll make a motion, we approve, staff recommendation.
And I'll second. Alrighty. And, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, two width, part of Section 15 Township 10 North Range 2 East, excuse me, of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, AKA Lot 3 Road Track, general location known as 15515 Perry Road, from zoning classification A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with CUP, conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Alright, thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second, we can call the question. And that passes seven zero, so I'm glad your grandkids get to come visit. Alrighty, item sixteen, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezon property located at 3715 North Kickapoo Avenue, containing approximately 2.5 acres from C-2 Suburban Office Commercial District and R-1 Single Family Residential District to C-3 Commercial Highway District, case number RZ06-21, applicant Kim Wheeler on behalf of HIA Legacy LLC. Public hearing rescheduled from June 21st, 2021 to July 19, 2021, and Ms. Klein is up again.
Again, Commissioners, Mayor, Commissioners, sorry, getting fired. We're doing another rezoning. This one is a little bit easier, it's on Kickapoo, you might recognize the area as where they have Tag Agency. And the area next to it is kind of vacant, a small part, and then to the east, the larger area that's vacant, that's the residential area. The C-2 is what's adjacent to the Tag Agency. The applicant has requested rezoning the full two and a half acres to C-3, which is the Highway Commercial District. While nothing is set in stone and would probably be sold, it's my understanding, and staff's been advised, that a strip of retail commercial office general would be located further back from Kickapoo than where the Tag Agency sits. So there would be potentially a drive to the east with the center further back.
Okay. Questions? Okay, so we will open the public hearing, is there anybody here to speak in favor? Alright, seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, very good, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion up here?
Do we typically have drives out of C-3 into neighborhoods?
There'll be no access.
Sorry, I thought you said there would be a back drive on the east side.
No, no, I apologize.
No, you may not have said it, I may have heard it incorrectly.
The drive from Kickapoo would go to the east to where the proposed center would be located.
Okay, so there'd be no access off the east side?
Correct.
Access would be only off Kickapoo?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? About 37th Street, right? No, I just, I just look, I used to live in that part of the world, and just knowing that we're just making sure what that was right there off of Kickapoo, and I think 37th is the next major road, yeah. Okay, questions? Okay, anyone want to make a motion? What's staff recommendation on this, is?
Again, staff recommended approval, and the planning commission recommended approval as well at the last meeting.
Very good. I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you, sir, and I'll second. So, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Flood, okay, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, two width, attractive land described as being at a point 30 feet south of the northwest corner of the southwest quarter of Section 6 Township 10 North Range 4 East of the Indian Meridian, then 660 feet, then south 164 feet, then west 660 feet, then north 165 feet to the point of beginning, city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification C-2 Suburban Office District, and R-1 Residential, Single Family Residential District to C-3 Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Alright, thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question. And it passes seven zero.
Thank you.
So, item seventeen, consideration of year-end budget amendments for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 for the following accounts, do I need to read all of this, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you, good evening.
Good to see you, Jacob.
Good to see you. Yeah, this first thing on the agenda, fiscal year 21, all these amendments are just cleanup items for the end of the fiscal year. If you have any questions about them, I'll be happy to answer.
Anybody got questions for Jacob? I think this is pretty typical year-end, year beginning.
Pretty routine, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthews?
No.
And Sehorn. Alright, so we have motion and a second, so we will call the question. And item seventeen passes seven zero, if seven zero. Item eighteen, consideration following budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. I guess I don't need to read those either, do I? So, we're good, Jacob, you're up again, sir.
Again, these are somewhat cleanup items that are kind of lost in the shuffle to get our fiscal year '22 budget out, you know, things, certain things fall through the cracks, and we find them soon after, and that's what these consist of. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Anybody got questions? Who want to make a motion? Thank you, sir. Mr. Weaver?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Matthews. Alrighty, so we will call the question then. Alrighty, passes seven zero. Item nineteen, acknowledged monthly sales tax and budget reports, so Jacob, you're up again, hopefully you have good news.
Yes, yes, we do, we have, again, good news for this month. July, sales tax came in better than expected, higher than the projections by about 15% approximately. That's for sales tax, for use tax, use tax came in at, above projections by 44% approximately.
Wow.
And that's for sales tax for the budget report. We have OpenGov going, up and running, and so we put the instructions in the agenda. We have a link in the agenda that you can click on and go to the stories and see our graphs inside of OpenGov. It seems, in summary, in the general fund, our largest fund, all the revenues exceeded projections, and the expenditures came in under the budgeted amount.
Really?
Yes, they did.
Wow.
Yeah.
So we have to do that every month?
Yes, yes, that'd be great.
That's good.
Yes. So if there are any questions about those, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Anybody got any questions? It's definitely a good report. Hopefully people are taking advantage of the OpenGov, where they can go in and look at all of this, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, I agree, transparency.
Alrighty, I guess no other questions, good job, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Alrighty, item twenty is administrative report. I think Chief Wilson's gonna join us, Edward Burns Memorial Grant. I bet that's what you had me sign.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is notice of the 2021 Department of Justice Edward Burns Memorial Grant. We're applying for, the amount is $28,272. We, again, are partnering with the sheriff's office and splitting that in half. They'll get half to buy whatever they need over at their department, we'll get half of it. And our half is $14,136, and we're using that money to purchase 15 new body cameras. We have some, we rotate them through, we've got some that are getting to be about seven or eight years old, we need a few extra for our overlapping shifts, so everybody has one, so that is the purpose, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
I think that's a really good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chief. Alrighty, item 21, new business.
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
No new business. So we're down to Commissioners' comments, so Benny, you want to start down here in?
Well, Chance, it's been a good run, and good luck on your new adventure and everything. And we appreciate Eric's willingness to come and help us maintain until we can get a new leader. And he's left already, but I was going to wish Tim Burke good speed, he's leaving Shawnee. And so, he's been an expert in our business development and his leadership, so I know he's gonna be missed. And so, I think that, and, oh, I want to do a special thank you to all of the people that got together, put the rodeo back together, and I think we had a good run in the rodeo. And that's a good example of what we can do in Shawnee if we all put our mind to it.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Chance, I want to say we appreciate what you've done, you know, you've left the city in a lot better shape than when you came, you know, from the finance director to being city manager. And again, Eric, we really appreciate you coming and taking the rain for a while while we looked for a hire. You know, we had a couple other hires we were gonna have to make on top of that, but I hate it, we lost Asher. You know, she was definitely good at what she did, you know, glad to have you on board. I think it's easy as long as everything's going good, so... The rodeo, you know, another, uh, spectator week for that, uh, the lake, you know. Hot topic. You know, one of those few that, uh, people take, uh, a lot of heated battle on that, and what they think's important, what they think's right, you know, I think there's, you know, kind of both sides of the fence there, so, you know, we need to take our time and do it right at this point. You know, time is not as much of an essence as it would have been three or four months ago, uh, so I'm sure we'll have time to hash it out, I know Bob's kind of got it by the reins, but where you'll get with the lake group, uh, you know, I'm sure Ed has some that he'll, he'll want to put on it to, to make it, uh, fair for everybody involved, uh. You know, other than that, that's, I've probably talked him up tonight. Now, these, these guys did a great job already.
I know they did, didn't they?
Yeah, kind of, they kind of covered all of it. Chance, thank you, I want to say that myself for everything you've done. Yeah, the, the financial change that's happened in, in your tenure is, uh, it's been, been good, thank you. Thank you very much for your service. Thank you, Eric, for being here for us once again. Glad to have you back for a period of time. I heard the rodeo went very well, so that's, uh, that's great, uh, great news.
Um, I'm counting right, it looks like we had twelve people speak in the public comments, that was amazing. Uh, so, appreciate everybody speaking to us and taking the time to, to give us their thoughts and, and finding their, their, the strength for their, you know, their voice, because we've said this so many times, we want this to be a, a city where every person has a voice, and that no one's voice is greater than anybody else's. But when we have more people speak like this, it makes it feel like we're all using our voice to the best of our abilities. And I really appreciate that whenever we create an environment where everybody can speak. Thank you all, appreciate you.
Okay, I too want to echo the, the Chance comments, Chance, I've only had a year with you, but I sure grew to appreciate excuse me, you and your knowledge and your willingness to help, and, and thank you so much. Um, Mr. Benson, I look forward to you and getting appointed and, uh, having your leadership and knowing you'll work with us. And, uh, again, I appreciate the discussion with the lake. You know, I could move tomorrow, and I'm going to still have the same concerns that we get addressed. So, living there is, is wonderful, but again, I, I want to represent the people that are concerned that really are a lot smarter than I am about, um, issues that they have. And I just appreciate you, Commission, for me and Todd, and a, a long discussion, and then letting this defer get some specific language, so I appreciate it, I appreciate all the attendance from people tonight.
First off, I, uh, check off my list here. Um, I almost pulled it from the consent agenda just so we could comment on it, but thankful for Mr. Berg and all he's done for our community. Um, he's taken special interest in mentoring young leaders, and, um, appreciate that out of him, and, uh, he'll be missed, wish him the best of luck, I think anytime you can get closer to grandkids, I hear it's a good thing to do.
Yep.
Uh, I'm looking forward to maybe doing that myself someday, so want to wish him the best. Um, the Purple Heart, um, ceremony was very moving and meaningful. And to live in a community that honors our veterans, uh, is a big deal and important. I appreciate Ms. Craig and all that she's doing to move the needle and, uh, bring all of us together to really advance that cause. A comment on the IFYR, uh, certainly, I was out there three nights last week, and, uh, what a big time event for our community. We had Senator Langford, Secretary Arthur, Congresswoman Bice, and the governor, uh, all join us. I think the lieutenant governor, did he make it out, I couldn't, he was supposed to, but I'm not sure he did. But, uh, it's not issue-free. We have much work to do in that, uh, arena, it actually works when you say arena that time. Um, there's much work to do out there, and I think, uh, it's only getting more urgent. But the, to see the magnitude of the event, um, we had, I was in a civic club this week where two of the youth directors came and spoke, and to see the importance to them of the event, um, I think warrants us rolling up our sleeves and asking the difficult questions and getting the work done. Not just for that event, but that being the hallmark event, um, but, uh, something that we want to continue to see. And then, uh, Chance, I want to wish you the best, buddy. I think my enduring image of you will be during the ice storm, and you, you didn't roll up your sleeves because that would have been cold. But your willingness to get out in, in the field with the staff and, and, uh, really help our community navigate a very, very, uh, tough situation. And, uh, we are in a, in a, uh, difficult spot right now, uh, with so many, uh, important pieces to replace. And, uh, as a grandson of a, uh, former, um, Navy man, I think when it's a difficult spot, you call, call in the Navy. And so we're excited to have Mr. Benson here with us, and, uh, look forward to him, uh, helping us along the way and, uh, continuing the trajectory that we're on.
Thank you, sir. You guys talked about a lot of good stuff, there was a lot of good stuff to talk about today. Chance, I want to thank you, uh, for, for all you've done, I mean, when you, when you got here, the city was in a bad spot financially, and you were, you had a keen enough eye to spot that and then, uh, you know, get things going in the right direction, so, you know, it's going to be hard losing you, um, I hate that we've lost that, Ashley, no, no, take no offense, Jacob, but, but, you know, Ashley's, Ashley's going to be a tough one to follow, that's, that's for sure, I mean, she's done an, an awesome job. And, uh, good opportunities for, for both of you, so wish, wish you well, we hate to lose, uh, Tim. He's done a lot from our, you know, for our community in the last, I think it was what, twelve years he's had that position. You know, he could, he could give you a, a ride around Shawnee and tell you what was going on probably better than anybody alive, and, um, I, I enjoyed getting to do that with him. Uh, lots of good news tonight on, on your report, that's good to hear, we're going to hold you to that every month. So, uh, so things are, things are going well, uh, I did get out to the IFYR the, the night the governor was out there, um, it was a nice event, well-attended, and, uh, everything went off, uh, really, really well, and, uh, it's always good to have, you know, the governor and all the other dignitaries we had, had in town, that, that's, uh, you know, a good thing. This weekend, I don't know how many of you were on Main Street, but let me tell you, it was rocking, I don't know what else to say. I mean, there was that big car show, had some awesome cars in there, and, um, and that was great to see. Uh, went down the other end, they had that market going, and that was really cool. And then later on, after I had to get out of the heat a little bit, I went back and, uh, man, the library had their book sale going, and it was shoulder to shoulder in there. So, I mean, Main Street was just jumping from one end to the other. It's good to see Eric again, I appreciate you coming back to tolerate us a little bit. Uh, we appreciate your help last time, and I know it'll be good working with you again as we find a permanent city manager. As I said, you know, Lauren had a, uh, I'm just looking, there's something in the seat there about where she was sitting, so hopefully someone didn't leave something behind. But, um, that, uh, you know, good things that she's been doing, um, I know we had a lot, a lot of discussion on the, on the lake, and it was something that we, you know, we didn't want to talk through, and we'll have a lot more discussion on that. Um, we are, we are always willing to listen to, you know, any of you that come and, and talk to us, and we get lots of emails and texts, and, and I'm, I'm glad to see lots of people attending and, and coming to, to talk with us, so. I've probably rambled enough, we will, um, we will adjourn and we will move on to, uh, the airport authority. So, uh, item one is consider approval of, uh, the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Using Mr. Weaver. So we will call the question there on item one. And that passes seven-zero, any new business on item two?
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Thank you, sir. So we are adjourned, and we will move to municipal authority. Item one is consider approval of consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, Cooper.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you. So, Commissioners Weaver and Sehorn, so we will call the question. And that passes seven-zero. Item two is consideration of a year-end budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one for Shawnee. Municipal Authority Fund five-zero-one for cleanup of fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one budget, and Jacob is here to see us again.
Yeah, uh, same as the, uh, COS, just a routine budget amendments at the end of the year for cleanup. Uh, if there are any questions, I can try to answer those.
It's kind of what we see this time of year. Anybody got any other questions, or? A motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. And I'll second. Matthews, uh, Mr. Flood, so we will call the question, thank you, Jacob. I think it went, hit it again there, there you go. It, it, it passes seven-zero. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Alrighty, we are adjourned, it's time to go home.